Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the Common Council of the City of Gladstone, March 24th, 2015, special meeting. It is now 6:30 in the evening. Jolene, could you take the roll call, please?
Counselor Nelson?
Here.
Counselor Mercer?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Sipkin?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Reiser?
Here.
Mayor Jacobella?
Here. Can you guys join me for a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business, I think we're starting with the cards. Anyone filled out for business from the audience? Nothing? Nothing for us? Okay, there's nothing on the consent agenda. We have one letter of resignation from Park and Recreation Board under correspondence from Jessica Beazey. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, we received another letter of resignation from her husband, Elliot Beazey, for the Planning Commission, Budget Committee, and the City Hall Police Department Advisory Committee.
Yeah. That's too bad. Moving down to the regular agenda, the item was removed, so we are basically done with the special meeting. I'm now going to adjourn the special meeting. We are now moving into a work session, and we are going to swap the agenda a little bit. We're going to take item number four first, which is the RH Development Agreement, Transu Property at 18121 Webster Road, and then we'll do the City Council training. Okay? Everybody good with that?
Sure.
Okay. So, let me start it out, please.
So, thank you, Mayor. With respect to item four, that we're taking first, this is a request and a matter that I think staff, particularly Scott Taber and the contract city engineer, have been discussing with the developer, or the developer that proposes to develop the Transu property, which is behind the city-owned property on Webster Road. There have been some issues. They've taken a very, very close look, you know, at the site, and as part of that discussion with city staff, there were some concerns raised that the HT Properties, the developer, looked into, particularly with respect to sewer service, also water service on the property. So, over the past few months, we've had discussions with HT Properties and their representatives, and the consensus was that, you know, they were going to be looking to do some fairly significant upgrades to sewer service in that area in order to serve their property. And based on, as I understand it, some requests from city staff to look at the potential of moving an existing water line and upsizing it, the sort of discussion became, okay, well, you know, in doing this, you know, there's going to be some financing issues, obviously, and would there be a path forward that would allow for some potential cost sharing of some of those improvements? You're not looking at the development tonight, I want to be very, very clear about that. That has a separate process that it would have to go through. It would, at the very least, start at the Planning Commission, could end there, could be appealed, and then at that point, the City Council would see it. We, Mike Robinson, attorney for HT Properties and I, and I've worked with Mike a lot over the course of my career, and I have a great deal of respect for him professionally and personally, and we sort of thought, well, you know, if this is going to, you know, if these infrastructure issues are as prevalent as they are, you know, how would that be handled as part of a design review process? And taking a look at your code, there isn't a lot of clarity, and I'd almost go so far as to say that really, with respect to some of those infrastructure issues, they're not really addressed in your design review criteria. And that's something actually, with respect to your design review criteria, that the Planning Commission is in the process of looking at and likely will be considering an update to, to make some of those standards a little bit, flesh them out, make them a little bit more robust. In any event, I think, you know, and I'll let obviously Mike and HT speak to this issue, but I think much of what they're, want to talk about with the council tonight is, you know, to get some of that stuff done, some of it would affect their property and need to get done if they were ever to develop that site, and then some of it would not. Some of it really wouldn't be triggered, if you will, by their development of the site, but rather be improvements that might benefit the city in a larger context, rather than just that development. So, the idea here is just to gauge council interests in potentially having a development agreement that would sort of spell out how some of those improvements would be made. That would be contingent, obviously, upon, you know, a successful and approved design review, and with that, I think I'd turn it over to HT for maybe just an introduction of sort of what they see as the big issues, and obviously, you know, any questions the council has, Pete and I are here to help, and I think Scott's also here tonight, so. One more, I'm sorry, one more thing, and this, I guess, is also important. This is a very discretionary decision on your part. As I said in my memo, this is something that, you know, there's nothing about this that you are required to do, compelled to do. I think, you know, there may be, a better way to look at it would be, hey, does it make some sense to do this? And of course, that's going to be, you know, depending on the details and your comfort level with it. So, with that, I'll turn it over.
David?
Yes?
One quick question. So, the outcome of this, this is a work session, we cannot make a decision. So, what is it that staff is looking for from us tonight?
Yes, so you wouldn't be making, we would be looking for some direction from you, basically, whether you think it is wise to go forward and draft something like a development agreement that we then bring back, you know, for your approval or amendment or rejection. The work session, the prohibition, basically, on any decision in a work session would be something that you're, a decision that you're required by law to make, and certainly, tonight, there's nothing to require to do. So, you know, it's perfectly appropriate, and we do that a lot with clients, that in the context of a work session, the council would give us some direction as to a next step, if any.
All right. Good evening. I appreciate a chance to meet with you guys tonight. This has been in the works for some time. I think we initially started down this path about 14 months ago, and we worked, okay, all right. So, we've been working on this for a while. My name is Hans Tigerson, I'm the principal with HT Investment Properties, and the developer that's proposing the development on this site. And tonight, joining with me, some team members. We got Mike Robinson with Perkins Cooley, and Andy Toll, and Kathleen with Three J's Engineering, and then some staff with HT Investment Properties, from my construction department, John Lewis. So, wanted to just kind of present some information to you, and I'd like to give you some information from that we've kind of drawn from. There was a very comprehensive city water master plan study that was done recently, and I'd like to hand that out. Just, you guys have probably seen this, but we've kind of highlighted some points on it, so. So, there's several, two items that this property we need to address. One is city water main, and then the other, which we've done a sewer scope on the sewer services that serve this property. So, you guys, when was it, back in January or February was the city water master plan that, has that been adopted from that study?
Well, it's been accepted as complete by the council.
Okay. So, this is from that, and there's a water line that, just to the south, runs through this property. It's a six-inch asbestos water line, and it's hard to see, but in the study, there's an intermediate zone that's in pink in this property, and that's, there's some pressure issues in that intermediate zone, and this property falls in this, the property that is at 18121 Webster Road, and there's a water line that goes from Webster down to Oakfield, and that asbestos water line runs through this property. Initially, we thought we would look at developing around that and try not to impact that line, especially after, in our pre-app meeting with your engineering firm that you've hired, Sisal Engineering and Public Works Department, you know, we realized that, you know, that the issues are, they're definitely significant, and there's an easy chance of fracturing that line. There's a lot of issues with that asbestos water line. So, we thought we would come on board with the city and look at just moving that line. Our proposal is to move that line directly to the south and put it in a 20-foot easement along the property that was proposed for the city library along that north property line, a 20-foot easement. In this study, we've highlighted some things. There's 17 miles of asbestos water line in the city of Gladstone that you're proposing to replace over the next 30 years, and that proposal has a budget of, your proposed budget is $24 million, spending about $820,000 a year, and based on that budget, we feel like we can help the city out, help address some of your issues, you know, take an area with low pressure and increase that water line to a 12-inch, raise the pressure on it, get rid of some of this eight-inch water line, or six-inch water line that's asbestos for significantly less money. So, what we've proposed is that we split the cost of replacing that water line with the city. We're estimating that water line cost to be about $180,000. There's a lot of rock on site there, and there's quite a bit of elevation change, too. So, we're looking at basically doing a joint venture with the city, and we'll install it and put it in for you and help solve some of those issues. So, with that area, I wanted to see, you guys have any questions about that?
The water line?
About, yeah, about the existing water line, pressures out there that maybe we can, I know Scott Taber's here tonight, maybe.
When you talked about moving it to the 20-foot easement?
Yes.
Is that 20-foot easement on the city property, or is it going to be on the property that you're taking, moving it from?
Well, our, the proposal would be to put that on the city property, that 20-foot easement, and our, the property that we are looking to develop doesn't go the whole distance from Webster Road to Oakfield, so we, if we put that on the edge of the property, you know, we think it could be a plus as a developer. They wouldn't have to put in utilities, and we could provide stubs ups. We're also, at the same time, proposing that we go that direction with our sanitary sewer and use that and put stubs ups for sanitary out to Oakfield, and so that property would really become, you know, a lot more turnkey, and whoever, you know, whoever develops at that property, those services would be readily available and right on the property line, so.
So, when you find out that you're in the hard rock mining business to put pipe in, and the cost goes through the roof, whose responsibility are those costs going to be?
Well, that's why we're looking at, you know, a joint venture with shared costs. We've, you know, the city estimate was about $300,000 is what you guys have estimated, and you guys, and, you know, this is definitely a rock, you know, area that there is quite a bit of rock. We've done some testing out there, some potholing on our piece of property. We're, you know, certainly willing to, you know, bear significantly part of that cost.
Yeah, I'd be concerned about, you know, never-ending cost overruns and the bottomless pit, you know, these things always go over budget. This, because of what's there, could go way over budget, so.
I understand, and, you know, I, one of my initial thoughts was we put a cap on it. We say city participation up to a level of, you know, we've bid the thing, and we've, we feel like, based on our bids, we feel pretty confident of our numbers, but, you know, a city participation of, you know, $90,000 is, you know, is one of our proposals that we had talked about, too.
Okay, thank you.
So, and this would be, this participation would be also, I want you guys to know it in the form of a credit, system development fee credit. So, anything else that I'm missing? Okay.
So, Mayor? You're a developer. You tell me, if you ran the water line and the sewer line and the easement on your side of the property down to Oakfield, and then jogged it over and got to Oakfield, as a developer coming in cold, would that be an issue for you?
Well, unfortunately, we can run it through our property, we just can't get all the way to Oakfield. And so, that's, the issue is getting, our property doesn't run all the way from Webster to Oakfield. So, we can certainly replace, you know, or move the portion of water line on our property, but that doesn't get us, and it doesn't solve all the pressure issues. And maybe Scott, that's something you want to speak to?
Just briefly. Just for clarity for City Council, the water line that runs through the Transu property is an eight-inch?
I was correcting you back there.
Eight-inch AC line that was put in in the late 60s, somewhere in that area. It is the sole feeder line for our intermediate zone, which I want to make sure we get apples and apples and oranges and oranges here, is that it's not so much a pressure difficulty, it's a capacity issue that we have in that area. We are sustaining good pressure, it's the volume of water that we need to supply to that area to meet good fire quality, firefighting capacities on that. We are intertied on the intermediate zone up at Caldwell with a six-inch intertie to Oak Lodge via a pressure-reducing, pressure-sustaining valve that has helped. A benefit of replacing that main with a larger-sized diameter engineered design, probably at least a 12-inch, if not more, from getting it off the Transu property is during construction, we would, you would be able to put that line in and keep that system viable during the construction of that 12-inch, or whatever size line the engineers suggest to put in, and then make one connection and abandon that eight-inch. That eight-inch not only runs to the Transu property, it runs between houses down to Stone Oaks Court and out to Oakfield Road. I've often had nightmares of what's going to happen if I had to go in there and replace that, or fix a leak, or how the city would purchase a house that floated away or was demolished by a large water main break, and those things are notorious for breaking. So, to me, we have an opportunity to look at the possibility of utilizing our 27-inch water main that is on Webster Road, which is our main feeder line. Back when they put that in, they had a blind flange put on there for a 24-inch valve to fit on to go across Webster Road to a site where it was proposed for a reservoir at that time. We could certainly utilize that, and putting the right-size piping in there for a future reservoir, and then necking it down for the sizing the pipe to go to Oakfield Road and our intermediate zone, we could utilize the existing pressure in that main, which is a static at about 62, and more if there's more pumps at the NCCWC site, or pumping station during the summer. Pressure-regulating valves could certainly keep that pressure fluctuation just in the right area, because we want at least 50, 55 PSI, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. So, we could certainly utilize the possibilities of this venture on that, and be prepared for a possibility of a reservoir site onsite there, and get it off, out of the way, AC pipe through Cross Country, that's just, it was poor installation back then. They shot most of that when they went in there. I've talked to the old guys years ago, they, yeah, we did this, we shot that. Pete lost a finger when he did it, and I'm just, you know, kind of not that Pete. But this is, you know, kind of how it went back then. I don't think they imagined the development that we had at this time, so our system in that intermediate zone is undersized for capacity issues. The pressures are okay. The benefit of putting it on our 27-inch main would be that we could take and still utilize our Kirkwood reservoir and still supply water to other areas that are affected in the intermediate zone away from Oakfield Road and increase firefighting capacities. Questions?
Does the sewer line need moving?
No, no, not the sewer line. We have, that's, you want to get that later? But we did have, on my request, as I wanted them to prove to me that whatever development was put on that property, it would not adversely affect the, our existing infrastructure. So, they did a sewer study and came up with some recommendations for that, if they were to develop what their intention to do. So, I wanted that out in the open, because we have some problems with that system right now. They've come up with a plan. Pat Sisal of Sisal Engineering reviewed it, we kind of agreed this is a good plan, but at least we're not going to surprise people downstream with problems later on caused by increasing capacities on those pipes. So, those issues have been discussed, and Hans will let you know what that is.
The intermediate zone, so this will have no effect on what we call our high-pressure zone?
No. It's just as important, though.
And I'm just going to go back just real quick. Let's assume for a second you could go straight from Webster to Oakfield on your property. Let's just assume you had the whole run. How as a developer, would that 20-foot easement impact you? Would that, if you were looking at a property cold, and that 20-foot easement was there, would that be, well, I can't build there, and therefore, that value is down? Would that be accurate?
We, you know, just, as a multifamily site, you know, we would run our, we would place our buildings strategically, so we would run the water line through the parking lot and, you know, and then feed it through the building straight out. You know, if the city doesn't do this, we're going to be looking at connecting to the, you know, either working around it, which is one proposal, which is, you know, a real concern, being the pipe is, you know, right at about two feet from the surface, and we have, you know, by the time we scrape the site and take off the soils, we'll have, you know, roughly a foot of cover, so there is definitely a concern there. And then, we'd be connecting to, if we do move the line, we'll be connecting in somebody's backyard, and, you know, as the study shows here, there's a high, connecting to, you know, all these asbestos water lines, there's, you know, there's a high propensity to them to leak. It says that on the 710, 7.2, connections to existing AC pipes are difficult to make and have a tendency to leak, so recommendation that the city strategize to replace, strategize the replacement of their AC pipe to minimize the need for connections to existing AC pipe. So, we can, you know, we can connect there, it's just, there's going to be a high likelihood of problems, especially when you've got a pipe within feet of somebody's backyard. So, that's, that's why, you know, our original, originally, from our first look at this property, we were, we thought, well, we can just leave that there. The pipe flows down the property, it doesn't follow the easements. We had to spend quite a bit of time and money trying to locate it, because we knew, we had city easements and for this water line, and, you know, whoever built it was, you know, come to rock, let's move it over to get around the rock. And so, we located the water line, and, you know, it's just, it's the best solution is to move it, and as Scott said, it solves a multitude of other problems for, you know, a city, you know, we can set a cap of, you know, $90,000 and say, that's our participation. You know, city budget, this is, you know, the replacement of this water line, and is for 1,150 feet, you know, it's about a $300,000 proposal, and you know, you know, this is kind of the top of the hill, this is where the rock is, so you got, it's, for average, this is going to be at the high end of whatever your average budget is proposed. So, any other questions here?
Scott, what utilities do we have in Webster Road in regards to water sewer?
On Webster Road?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's generally where we want to put things.
Well, we have sanitary sewer, but that line takes in a huge area and is pretty much a capacity right there, which goes down to Oakfield Road and then down and turns to East Herford Street. We have a 12-inch old cast iron line that is the primary feeder line for our low-pressure zone that goes down out of our reservoirs, and then via gravity feeds our low-pressure system down to here. Of course, we have bordering that at a certain point from Case on Up, we have our 27-inch transmission main. We have a six-inch line that was extended down a number of years ago off of that eight-inch AC line by the Transu property, by the driveway, so, and there's also a gas line out in there, and on the other side of that, there's some fiber, or phone lines, fiber optics, too, so. There's a lot in that, those areas there. And one of the things that, over the years of working in public works, is I've tried to eliminate having the large infrastructure on private property. It's just not good practice. First of all, accessibility is paramount when you need to go and fix something very quickly. It's difficult to get in where you don't have roads or other areas to get into, if you're going to someone's backyard, that makes it extremely difficult just to get equipment there. So, I've opposed, I'm not opposing, but I told them right off the get-go, I don't want that line on that property because of the high potential of it breaking and also accessibility by us. It's hard enough for us to go between houses from Stone Oaks Court, let alone now a development of a multifamily dwelling in there, so.
Thank you.
You know, we, our proposal, you know, we see it as a win, because for one, we're going to be paying significant dollars in system development fees to bringing this project into the city of Gladstone, plus increasing the tax base. So, it's a chance for you, for the city to have, you know, 1,100 So, it's a chance for you, for the city to have, you know, 1,150 feet of water line replaced for basically no money out of budget because we're asking for that $90,000 to be in the form of SDC credit. So, solves a lot of problems, gets a piece of property that, you know, as a developer, to have infrastructure in place on a piece of property, and especially a piece of property that has a lot of rock on it, you know, I just think it's a win for the city. You know, we're, we're stepping up to the plate and gonna, you know, solve a lot of the problems for the city and a great way to kick off the city's new water master plan. Any other questions?
Do you, well, but Scott, do you have, we don't have a sewer master plan yet.
Not a sanitary sewer master plan, not at this point. We are out for RFQs at this point.
So, we really, I mean, kinda almost, this might be ahead of that in some regard?
My job is to deal with existing infrastructure, what we have right now, and the first thing that came to my mind was, you know, how is that gonna impact further downstream? And that's why I wanted an engineered study showing that this would not adversely affect it, or what we could do to change that if there was adversity in the impact downstream from that. From, I almost went all the way to Portland Avenue with that because I wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna have surcharges coming out of manholes and this and that. The sanitary master plan may, is needed, and it may allude to some of these other things that probably, that we're probably gonna be taking care of if this was put into place with that improvements coming off of Webster and Oakfield Road. They would probably have recommended something similar to what they have come up with on that. So, but yes, we still need a sanitary master plan.
I guess I might, might clarify the question maybe is, we really don't know, I mean, that's, the question is, this could take care of it, but until the master plan's in place, that could supersede it and say, "It needs to be bigger than that."
Yeah, it could be that. But that's why I wanted an engineer. They had an engineer look at it, I had our engineer look at it, just to verify that, okay, they've covered their bases. In the big scheme of things with a master plan, they may come up and say, "Whoa, something totally different." I don't know.
Okay, Scott, one question here, just to get something understood. The high-pressure line that you spoke about at the last meeting, which was a high priority...
High-pressure system.
Okay. Now, this one is not as high a priority, but it's also very high in your mind?
Yes, they're both high in my mind.
Where are some other real high priorities?
Well, those two are probably number one and two, and I could flip either, either or. There are other areas in town that we have off of our intermediate zone, Collins Crest, Stone Hill, Ridge Gate, yeah, you, you know, Parkway, every area that we have asbestos concrete is, to me, is a priority. At some point, because of the problems we've had, flowing hydrants in the high-level system up in Devonshire and Sherwood Forest, those come to mind because we've had most breaks there and because of the fluctuating pressure, just because of its elevation and being fed by a pump station. This one, if we lose that 8-inch pipe, we lose a whole bunch of things, not only possibility of houses, but, you know, feeding that area. We can keep water in there, but we lose our firefighting capacities. So, to me, they're both, they're both number ones.
Along with some others.
Along with some others. So, I mean, I, I don't know if I'm giving you a straight answer, I don't wanna run you around, but, you know, to me, all of it is high priority because at some point in time, the cost of replacing the AC pipe and the requirements that are coming down the pike of how you address it, there are some people saying that you must remove it and dispose of it. Now, I don't know if that's coming true or not, and I hope to God it doesn't, but at that cost, then your costs go exponentially high. Our policy here, or my policy with Public Works, if we fix a main, we try to leave that in the ground. There are some times that we have to take it above ground, then we have to treat it as hazardous material. So, at some point in time, the rules and regulations of how you replace existing AC pipe may change and may cause you more cost associated with it, or they just may say, "Leave it alone, don't touch it, leave it in the ground, it's fine." I don't know, and it's been swimming back and forth for decades now. At one point in time, we had to have asbestos abatement cards, the city personnel who worked on water pipes. And then they come back and said, "Oh, you don't need that." You know, okay, you know, but that is changing. So, we have to keep abreast of what's happening and current, current places of how you dispose of it and how you replace it. So, these things you gotta keep in your mind, the longer we wait, the more it could be cost for us in the long run. We have a lot of miles in there.
On the high-pressure zone up there that we, you've talked about last time, do you have a ballpark figure to fix it, to make it workable without digging everything out of the ground? Or do you have to dig everything out of the ground?
The good news with that area up there, I believe it can be engineered to replace those existing pipes up there without putting a new main in the street like it should be and leaving the old pipe where it is. And I'm not sure what our master plan calls for, but it's not gonna be cheap, but at least we have that benefit of going out into the street and leaving that old pipe in the ground and once you transfer services, you're done. But I think the cost was, you know, probably several million.
Okay. And then, this, the property that we're talking about tonight, the reason, and I'm making this as kind of a question or a statement, I guess, the reason why this is a priority is because they wanna develop it and it becomes to the forefront. If, for sake of argument, nobody developed the property for another six years...
I'd still wanna get rid of it.
But would the high-pressure zone then be number one?
That would be number one, but we still have to look at that transu pipe or AC pipe out there that's still running between buildings, that's still undersized, that still restricts capacity issues for firefighting in our intermediate zone.
So, if they, if this property wasn't being developed, where would that line go? That you wanna, that 8-inch, the current 8-inch that you wanna replace probably with the, with what it's...
I would still wanna put it on city property. I would still wanna route it the way we've suggested it, just for the fact that, you know, it does two things. It, we can upsize the pipe and you have a future piping in case you want to build that reservoir on that site, which is, I've been saying for a number of years, even through all this library stuff, there's a site there for a reservoir that they picked a number of years ago. So, the piping and everything could be in place for that. So, you've got two biggies right there that you have accessibility to convey water to a reservoir and also to our intermediate zone at a higher capacity and the proper pressures.
So, there's been a train of thought of selling that property.
Then that would be a boon for the people who bought it because then, if this was to go through and if they had that water line in there, I would put a meter for that development right there off of that line and say, "There you go, and I don't have to worry about going onto private property. Fire protection, everything's covered with that larger main in that, our property." If someone developed that property, boom, you've got another area there with sustainable firefighting capacities and more capacity for them to use. That's where the engineering comes in, if we develop this to the right size, that main, for existing and future infrastructure that's gonna be developed in that area, either on the city property or on the transu property.
Would you have the same thing going down Webster Road?
We don't, the 12-inch line that runs down Webster Road just doesn't have the pressure there. At there, at that area, coming off our reservoirs, you've probably got about 30 PSI because of elevation in the reservoirs. You still have that 27-inch, and that's where you would feed off for that property for the, going across with a 12-inch or whatever to Oakfield Road. So, I guess when I'm...
I'm not really following here. Sure. So, instead of going across the northern border of what is now city property, going Webster then to, you know, around...
It would cost way, cost would go extremely high on that. You're talking adding probably 1,000 feet or more. So, I like direct lines, they look very nice on paper, and they do pan out. With the technology that's out there today, rock excavation is difficult, but it's, it can go pretty fast. They have hydraulic hammers, and you can always go back to the shooting with dynamite, but, you know, that's, that's up to the engineer how they see it. That's what they ended up doing over on the SDA property for that forest main for Clackamas County. They ended up having to shoot it, and once they did that, away it goes. You can weigh your values of the cost of using explosives, or you can sit for hours hammering on rocks. So, I mean, it's, that's the engineer's call. Me, I like to shoot and go, but, you know, that's frowned on these days, I guess. That's just my opinion. Question?
I have one, sorry, Scott. The Stone Oaks Court, so just as a point, who's responsible, so we don't have right-of-ways for the water line there right now, is that correct, or easements? And who's responsible...
We had easements through the transu property, I'm not sure.
And because it's our water line...
And I'm assuming that there was easements all the way through that?
It's our responsibility if it breaks from the background.
Right, but whether they stayed to the easements or not when they put that line in are two different things.
Okay. It's still our responsibility, even though maybe on...
Like Hans said, when they found a rock, they, "Oh, we'll just go around it," and they moved it over.
No, maybe on private property, it's still our responsibility?
Yes. Oh, absolutely. There's no doubt about that.
Any other questions? And we can come back to the water line, one thing, and as other questions, I think, I think the, you know, the main goal tonight is kinda getting a good understanding of what we're up against and what the issues that the city has. You know, this, this study that Brown and Caldwell pretty much has it all spelled out in and probably would be, you know, as far as further information on what we're dealing with, pretty much all covered in here. You guys spent a lot of money, and I think they pretty well addressed everything there. There is also some other issues with, you know, that we're able to solve a lot of issues for these, this drainage basin for sewer by some simple proposals of some fixes, which maybe Kathleen, we can address to just a few locations on Webster Road. And there's, currently, there's some surcharging, there's some floor issues, and basically, we spent a lot of money on studying the city's sewer line in this area and came up with four solutions that readily serves this property, so.
I have a good question for you. You keep talking about the system development charges.
Yeah.
How much do you anticipate them being for this potential development that we're gonna then knock $90,000 off of? Do you have any ballpark or...
Yeah, just under, just over half million.
Of system development charges?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
No, good question. Kim, that's your first turn.
I'm out.
Okay. Kathleen, let's talk about our sanitary issues and kind of the solutions. Kathleen did a very extensive study, I've been involved in these, and I think we, before in the other jurisdictions, I think we got a lot of things covered here, so.
So, we discussed the issues with Scott to figure out where there were surcharge issues, possibly some downhill, downstream flooding issues, and found that through our modeling and discussions with Scott, there are some issues on, on Herford, I believe, unless I have... Well, yeah, Herford downstream are existing conditions, and then once transu property would get developed, that would be exacerbated. So, I looked at what we could do to improve that downstream system so the transu property could get developed for future flows, and then also any other future development in that entire sanitary sewer basin that could go down Herford. And so, I came up with a few recommendations, discussed them with Sissel Engineering, and they kind of further gave some more recommendations for the city on that. One of the recommendations would be to replace that, an existing 48-inch manhole at Herford and Oakfield with a 60-inch manhole, and that would just increase the capacity through that manhole down Herford. Keeping all of the storm line in Herford, not changing that, but adding an 8-inch bypass line down Oakfield to Gloucester with a 6-inch orifice plate that could be used to monitor flows or cut off flows as needed. And then also adding an additional manhole on Oakfield to get rid of a 90-degree bend on Oakfield, making 245-degree bends, so the head loss in that system would be less. So, by adding this bypass line, it would eliminate the surcharging in Herford altogether, and capacity in Herford is still well above the future flows for the entire sub-basin development. Are there any questions on that?
So, there is an issue with the sewer line, then?
Existing, yeah.
Okay, so you do want to move, the transu property wants to move it?
No, no, just, so, right now, today, there's an issue on Herford. There's surcharging issues, there's the adverse slope downstream on Herford, and there's, I believe the pipes go down in diameter and then back up, so it's causing surcharging. So, you know, today, there is an issue. If future development occurs in the upstream basin, it'll be a bigger issue if there's not any improvements to the downstream system.
So, does the transu property want to move the sewer line or not move it?
No. This is, excuse me. So, right now, and maybe Scott can kinda shed some more light, there's a number of issues with, there's not a sewer line on the transu property. So, this is because of capacity issues. There's, right now, there's insufficient capacity issues with sewer capacity downstream. So, this basin that this property is in flows down Webster and Oakfield Connect and down Oakfield to Herford and Gloucester. There's some significant issues that by solving those issues, we solve a lot of other issues down the road that are just, are there today, and talking to people in the neighborhood, they said these issues exist. And so, we can solve these capacity issues, greatly increase the capacity, and, you know, solve issues that are gonna definitely be brought up in the city master plan. You know, right now, we have, and Scott, maybe you can talk to these, we've identified through this, you know, extensive study of these drainage basins issues that your city master plan for the sewer service, you know, I can only expect because there's such glaring issues is gonna bring up, and these are also issues that Sissel Engineering kind of proposed. So, by solving these, we can greatly increase the capacity there. So, Scott, why don't you talk?
Just briefly, if you can kinda see my scratching here, is we have lines coming from Oakfield and Webster, combine them to a lateral or main line coming down Oakfield Road heading south and makes a right-angle turn down to Herford Street. We have a lot of area from this sanitary line coming down here along with Herford, and when it hits this existing manhole, if there's enough, well, now you have to look at I and I on that, too, if there's enough water in there, it will actually come up through the manhole on that.
If there's enough water in there, it will actually come up through the manhole on that, that certain times. What they have suggested was to come through and put a larger manhole in here along with, uh, another manhole to angle this, to make it a, not such a, a sharp ninety degree angle, but two forty-five, along with extending a line down out of one of these to Gloucester Street with another manhole and have an orifice in there that will, can monitor how much flow rates of it. If there's enough flow, it will go down this street and then down to Gloucester and not have, uh, surcharging issues on that. I'm not sure, I, I don't have the plans in front of me, but that's pretty much what you have studied.
That's it, that's perfect.
I thought the two forty-fives were on Gloucester, they are on Hereford, is that the plan?
No, they are on Hereford. I think the primary line you were using would be from the Hereford line and an overflow coming down to the Gloucester line on that. So, they would have to put, solve new sanitary line down Oakfield Road to Gloucester and then back down on that.
And then you, and then you talked about I and I, what's I and I, didn't I?
Well, that's infiltration from groundwater sources.
Okay.
If we have a lot of rain, we have this problem throughout town. Uh, of course, with our overflow down the river, we just have one again. But that's, you know, getting fewer, probably, you know, knock on wood, maybe. But, we do get a lot of I and I from, uh, existing sanitary laterals from houses or even our own sanitary lines, that's hence why we need a sanitary master plan so we can review, just like we did on this east side of town, trying to split the problems to solve our overflow conditions down at, uh, Clackamas older. We need that so we can go through the rest of this area and look at where that water's coming from and how can we eliminate that source, which will take a lot of pressure off of our existing infrastructure, at least on this one, but throughout the town, this is, uh, why we need that sanitary master plan to look at, at that, because a lot of our capacity issues are from infiltration into, from groundwater into our, either property owner's laterals or into our own sewer line, uh, mains. And we look, we did a lot of work on this side, cleaned it up, that still doesn't mean we don't have issues. And I talked a bit about stuff and I'll, talk about something later, obviously, but that's fact. This is what they're planning to do here and after review from Cecil Engineering, they have determined that this is a fairly good plan, that we don't have to worry about having surcharges coming down and affecting our homeowners who, you know, been on it for years. And that was my main concern, I don't want people to have, suffer from people up here flushing all at once. So, that's why I asked for the engineering on that to prove to us that we would not have adverse impact, impact downstream from either, either street.
So, just clarification, it does say Oakfield Road Gloucester for the two forty-fives here in the proposed upgrade, so.
Well, clarity, we wanna make that.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
Hereford and Oakfield.
Is where you propose doing those, okay.
Yes, isn't that correct?
I, I do have, um, Gloucester and Gloucester.
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 Is that, was that where the, those were?
That's what I, that's what I have reported in Oakfield.
That's what we got here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I believe we're changing now with the sixty-inch and then-
Right, with the ten inch.
Sweeping and larger.
Oh, but then that's Gloucester sixty-inch manhole.
At Hereford.
Yeah, yeah, alright. So, either way, it benefits us on that.
Good.
Question, um, what is the, just the sewer component, what is the expected cost of that? And what is the city's commitment, what are you looking for from the city for the sewage part?
This is, um, so, um, and that's something that, uh, you know, sewer is, we'd be working with the county, um, on that and so, um, you know, we're looking for, you know, some type of proposal on that. Right now, we don't have engineering plans completed on this. There's, there's a sixty-inch manhole, um, on the upstream side, I believe, is what's proposed. So, a forty-eight inch existing, so replaced with a sixty-inch and correcting the flow pattern there. Then down at the bottom, uh, basically the flip where, where the two manholes are, we're gonna put those down at the bottom and put the big one up top and change that to a forty-five. So, you know, that's, you know, now, the one big issue here is we gotta pump the sewer around. You know, we can't interrupt flow, so that's a big cost is, and so, in keeping the systems live through, um, but, uh, you know, you're, it's right in that pushing a six-figure number to solve these issues here.
Hundred thousand or nine hundred ninety-nine, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars?
No, no, I know. Uh, it's pushing, uh, you know, A six, uh, you know, so it's right in less than a hundred thousand dollars to do this proposal. But it's, we don't have engineered plans to, uh, do it, but it's, you know, based on, there's two hundred and sixty feet of eighty-inch, um, you know, and those manholes aren't real deep and so, it's, uh, less than a hundred thousand dollars of work to solve those.
You would guess that the sewage component of this is about a hundred thousand dollars or something?
Yeah, about a hundred thousand, yeah.
That's a guess, okay, alright.
Yeah, yeah, less than, less than that number is what we're, um, estimating.
Okay, I have one other question. Uh, in our letter, uh, Cecil Engineering writes, um, basin-related comments, number three, the city does not want an improvement completed that will have to be upgraded when the next development in line is constructed. City wants to make sure that if an improvement is made to the sewer system, that it'll be capable of accommodating build-outs of Basin Eight and Twelve. Um, in Ms. Freeman's, uh, letter, I, I don't understand her answer. It would be four dash six in our packet.
Um, Cecil has reviewed this extensively, we've been back in front of Cecil's proposals of improvements and, you know, uh, having met with them on this, I know they, they feel like these issues are, you know, a one-time fix, so.
Okay.
So, that's.
Yeah, all, all future flows were, um, the zoning maps were, were looked at? Um, and the city zoning maps were looked at, so that all the future flows were taken into account to determine, um, basin flows. I'm not sure.
In your, in your letter, uh, eh...
Uh, regarding that, uh, we've taken, basically in stress the capacity of the sewer. This study takes and stresses instead of everything was maxed out, built out to max capacity, what would those flows be?
Yeah.
And what, what will it take to handle them? And that's what we're proposing and that's what Cecil has seen this and spent significant amount of time, um, reviewing and going, we've been back and forth in front of them. This is, you know, over the last close to ten months, um, and anyway, that.
So, so, I, you know, it, I'm assuming that these other basins are talking about the Seventh Day Adventist property or something close by there. So, if they were to be developed at some future date, are they gonna come before us and say, you know what, guys, you need to spend the half again to do this to the sewer system because the guys that did the transsew property caused us problems down here?
Well, if they're rezoned in the future, I don't know if they're going to be rezoned in the future, so.
I don't either.
Yeah, so, um, there, this isn't, um, designed to be a throwaway system, it's designed based on the current zoning. Um, and without knowing, you know, what kind of zoning could take place in twenty-five years, it would be impossible to, to design for, for that. Um, everything has been designed for future flows based on, you know, if, if the land use is one way today, but future flows or future zoning, the current zoning maps, um, show that there'll be an increase in, in densities, that has been accounted for.
Okay.
Currently, we have, uh, where the SDA enters our, our system is, one is at the end of, uh, Clarendon Street up by Stalker Park, they have a twelve-inch line that runs into that. Uh, they have one that comes across onto Dartmouth Street at Oakfield and I believe the next one is, um, Bearfield? I'm not sure, I think so. So, there's, they have for their current usage.
Current use, I understand.
Current usage.
Yeah.
If they develop that, then, you know, that's, that's kind of a.
So, you know, what happens if?
Yeah.
If, if is the key word here.
And then I think that-
They say sell the property and they-
I think the if should be if, if they sell that property and they were to develop it, then.
You'd make them pay.
They should be, pay for improvements because at, at the expense of what they're, they would have the capabilities for, they have, they might have to put in their own forest main and tie into, um, um, Clackamas Counties that runs through their property. So, um, as it exists right now, even when they have fourteen thousand or twelve thousand people there, that we don't have issues with them. So, I mean, and they're all on the sanitary sewer now, so, about my own issue.
So, if, if in the future, there's high-density residential or an office park or something like that there, the likelihood is that that developer will, in any case, in any regard, have to do some improvements to the utility sewer system?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, um. Probably you to start with. First of all, I wanna thank you. I know more about sewer than I ever thought I really wanted to know.
Haven't even started, Kim, just hang on.
Well, that's the second part of my question, I still don't know enough. You talk about increasing the size of the manhole. Um, and I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around that because if you've got this size pipe coming in, this size pipe going out, what difference does it make how big you make the manhole?
By making a high-speed turn. If you have a wide area to turn in, you can make it a lot easier and that's what we're talking about with the manhole. If you have a real tight turn that, it shoots through there and it wants to go other places than where it's supposed to and that's usually up.
Okay, so it's not so much the diameter of the manhole that's the big thing, it's what's underneath, the radius of the piping with a larger manhole?
Exactly.
Okay, that helps.
Okay.
So, now, right now, there's nothing going from Gloucester or from, uh, Hereford down to Gloucester?
No.
And they're planning on running all the way down to Gloucester with this? I'm a little confused.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then we're-
And then doing the double manhole down there.
Okay.
Okay, and that will alleviate a lot of troubles that we have with that.
On Hereford. Now, is all of those lines then continue down to Portland Avenue?
They do.
What happens when it gets to Portland Avenue?
Uh, it does not affect Portland Avenue.
Okay.
Uh, it could possibly have an impact at Clackamas Boulevard at our famous little, um, manhole down there because of the size. There you go, that, again, that's I and I and we have to look at. Under current conditions, I don't think that, you factored that in on the Clackamas and Portland Avenue?
Uh, my study went to Portland Avenue.
Okay, okay. Oh.
So, if, even if this was all done and built out, the incident we had this past weekend and what the weekend before that, they would have been-
Under normal, under normal conditions, without groundwater infiltrating into our collection system, I don't believe it would be an issue. However, I think that we have to look at that issue in the long term and that's where the master plan comes into play again to tell us which way we can go with that. So, under regular flows, we don't see that. But when we have a lot of rain, uh, it happens. And sometimes it may not be flow from, uh, residential or just usage, it could be just flow from I and I.
But this, this could, or most likely would, increase the problem?
It may be something they want to look at to alleviate your concerns over that, yes. But I'm, my concern is that I believe a lot of our overflow conditions that have happened have been of a number of things and number one, I think, the previous multitude that we had a number of years back, I believe there was something that was in that pipe and it broke free finally. But I understand it's, we still have I and I that comes in and we still have to deal with that and that line where that goes.
But with our exist-
We're having less frequency of it, so.
But with our existing conditions, the way they are, the last two incidents we, what we had probably would just be increased incidents if this was built out and done, it would?
I can't say.
Okay.
That's where you need the engineering.
Okay. Is there any reason to think that it wouldn't?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I don't have enough information to answer.
Yeah.
And that, that's a special thing. We ask all the way to Portland Avenue.
And, and this- And to be fair to you guys, this is a Gladstone issue that we're aware of and that's why I had the questions and directed them.
Commissioner, uh, Council, I was trying to think of a very nice way to say that. Um, my name's Andrew Toll, I helped scope the, the sewer study. And, I mean, at some point, we were just grasping for a master plan when we started into this. We, we had to, to find a finishing point and a starting point for our study and we couldn't analyze the entire system all the way down to the bottom. I mean, what, what we're doing is proving that there's capacity that's going to be added to the system to take on any new, um, contributions that we make to it. But that doesn't mean that we can sit, solve every, every problem all the way down the line. That's partly what our SDCs go towards. Um, anyway, I- Education tonight, so.
So, being fairly new, the SDCs, so the sewer work will be something the city pays for in entirety, is that correct? On the, what we're talking about on, uh, Oakfield, is that correct? And that kinda comes out of the SDCs or is that something that HT is going to cover or we're going to?
HT is-
We've offered to cover the sewer development, we offered to cover the construction of this.
Okay.
And that does two things, is it alleviates the issue that you have right now with the existing problem and add Hereford there with the surcharging.
Excuse me? And they're gonna want you to stand up to the mic if you would, please.
We're not asking for the city to bear any of the cost with this, okay? This is an issue with, uh, the sewer credits are with the county. They don't, you know, they're not gonna affect the city budget or the city cost or anything. That would be something that we'd take up with Clackamas County, not the city of Gladstone. So, we're just asking for, you know, if, uh, participation, you know, on the water line, you know. We're, um, so the sewer is a separate issue, this is not gonna be a cost to the city. We, uh, this study is basically, it studies a basin, this is basically what a city, you know, your city master plan does, is they take and they look at the zoning and they, they stress the system, max development and say, you know, what is gonna, the proposed flows, where's the problems? And we've taken and looked at Oakfield from just below this property and Webster right in front of this property and stressed it all the way down to Portland Road. And we've surveyed, you know, every manhole, gotten, um, the slopes and looked at, looked at the surcharging. And another proposal, another issue that, uh, in cities, the big thing, they wanna, cities wanna stay away from, they want gravity systems. And so, our proposal is also by putting the utilities, um, to the south, out to Webster Road, um, we can have on this whole system, gravity feed. This whole property will gravity feed out to Webster. So, that's, uh, that's, uh, very significant, um, just, uh, being able to have a gravity system. And I know, you know, I haven't looked in your code, but every other city that I've dealt with is they wanna eliminate pump stations, they want gravity and, um, so, anyway. Any other questions? Um, and we're, you know, we're not asking for a decision tonight. What we're asking for is, you know, this, um, development agreement to be, you know, staff to consider and to work with us on this development agreement. We, you know, there's, there's a lot of infrastructure issues, as you guys are aware of in city Gladstone. And we're saying, you know, here's a chance for a developer that has a good history of working with cities, we'll come in and prove ourselves as a developer that, uh, we've done other public works improvement projects. We've put in, you know, fourteen hundred feet of city, um, sewer line before. Um, you know, we'll come in, we, we can joint venture, instead of continuing to kick the can down the road, we can, you know, solve these issues for, you know, a fraction of the money that will have to be solved later. And, or we can just, you know, as far as, uh, the water line, we can move it and increase, just, we can route it around our buildings and connect to that point. and connect to that point, and down the road, increase the likelihood of a major event. So, I think that's kind of where, you know, as far as the water line, that are options that we're looking at. Um, this is, this is solutions that will come up in the master plan that have no, you know, this has no cost to the city. It solves a lot of problems, from what I understand from talking to people in that area, and talking to civil engineering, you know, and you guys have a city engineer that, um, you know, they, that's what you pay engineering firms, they've reviewed this, and I think it would be good, um, you know, I, we're not asking for any decision tonight, I, I think, um, probably be good to, uh, get their take on these proposed sewer issues, if you guys have any other questions, 'cause I know, um, in our meetings with them, I was very impressed with their, they know the city seem like better than anybody. So, any, anything else that?
I have a question for Mr. Doofman.
Mm-hmm.
What, what is our responsibility here? I mean, a developer comes in that wants to develop a piece of property, what is the city's base responsibility?
With respect to these issues, uh, you know, legal responsibility, I'm not sure you have much. I mean, to be candid, I, I think, you know, in the normal course, uh, this would, you know, go through a, a public hearing process, there would be engineering worked up as to, hey, you know, you're gonna be putting X a number of units on a piece of property, what effect is that gonna have on existing infrastructure? Legally, then, we are able to require that property owner, that developer, to mitigate those impacts and do what it needs to do to basically keep the status quo going. So, and I, you know, I think, I think whether it's, uh, you know, this particular development or any other, uh, you know, development, developers look at that and say, okay, well, you know, is that gonna, I mean, one of many decisions, I'm sure, but will that pencil it on it? You know, is that gonna make sense or not? Um, so, what I think you're, you're, you know, and I would certainly welcome any comments from Mike on this as well, I think what you're, you're presented with tonight is the possibility, and I, you know, from my, from my understanding, uh, as rudimentary as it might be, that the water line issue really isn't something that would, would be, uh, would affect the, the, the development itself. They could, you know, albeit maybe with a little bit more of a, some, a little bit more effort, uh, serve their property with the existing water line. I believe the sewer presents a different question, and I, I think there are likely impacts to the existing infrastructure that this development would have that would have to be mitigated somehow. Whether it would have to go to the length that we see and have talked about tonight, I don't know. My suspicion is that it probably would not, uh, that there would be lesser improvements they could make and still say, hey, you know, this, if this mitigates what we're gonna be contributing, the, the additional amount that we will contribute, we will mitigate in this way. So, I think tonight's discussion, and if you decide to go down this path, would be a, an opportunity perhaps for the city to get a little bit more, use a cheap phrase, bang for its buck. Um, but that, of course, is in the eye of the beholder, so.
I have another question for you then. Um, so, system development charges that we keep talking about, who gets that money, potentially? Does it all go to the county for the sewer, or would the city also reap some of those SDCs?
I was under the impression that there were two, one sewer charge, but that that went to two different, some, most goes to the county, but there's some residual that goes to the city. Um, I defer to staff on that, but-
Yeah. The Assistant City Administrator calculates the SDCs for us, so I believe that, uh, the SDC on the sewer goes to Tri-City, is that correct?
Part of it.
Part of it.
We have, we have sewer SDCs that go to West, and then we have sewer water SDCs that stay here in the city, and then we have transportation SDCs that stay here in the city as well.
Okay. Any idea how much of the sewer and water SDCs would be staying in the city of the five hundred, say he said five hundred thousand, which number they threw out?
I wouldn't wanna give you an incorrect number.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, my name is Mike Robinson, I'm a land use attorney. Um, if, if I could just take a few minutes, maybe I can speak a little bit about what David just told you, and then Counselor Johnson, maybe I can answer your question in a different way. So, as you know, in Oregon, a lot of what we do in land use is end up getting in fights over who's responsible for doing what. I've had the privilege of practicing land use law in Oregon for almost twenty years. I like it, I like working with citizens. The real reason I like it is it helps, I enjoy finding solutions, and that's why we came to the city staff and suggested a development agreement. The, the benefit of a development agreement is it lets us to, in the public process, how to share obligations. As David said, we probably don't have a legal obligation to do very much with that water line. It's apparently not constructed in the easement on the transu property, so we'd maybe wanna work out an easement for it. What Hans is proposing is to upsize the water line, and I think Scott did a, if I can understand it, I know he's done a good job of explaining it, and it sounds like there's some benefits to the community in upsizing the water line, which we wouldn't be obligated to do. So, we thought a development agreement, uh, that specifies moving that water line on a city-owned property, upsizing it from eight inch to twelve inch, by moving it, you put it in a better location, it's more accessible to city crews, and we also, I also agree with Scott, just based on what I know about property development, probably your property benefits by having that water line there with the ability for that, for a future developer to tap into it, if you choose to sell it. So, Counselor Johnson, you don't have a legal obligation to authorize staff to work with us on a development agreement, we know that, but we thought the benefits of doing a development agreement made sense because we're trying to, we're trying to get that, we're trying to move the water line to an appropriate location. It's not all of our responsibility, so that's why we're proposing a shared cost. As Hans said, we would cap the city's cost at ninety thousand dollars, so if it turns out Hans not, is not very good at removing rock, we'll bear that responsibility. What we wanted to do tonight is just get your, your approval, hopefully, to work with staff on the development agreement, then we'd work with David and Pete and Scott, draft the development agreement, and answer it. You've gotten, you've given us a lot of good questions, we would answer all of those in the development agreement, and bring it back to you in a public process for your approval. All of it ultimately is contingent upon the design, the planning commission approving the land use application, and if it were appealed, then council doing it. Development agreement doesn't make any commitments on the part of the city as to the outcome of the land use application. It simply does what I said at the outset. It saw, it, it, it really helps us solve an engineering problem at the outset, and I have to tell you, and I'm not always right about this, but most of the times I've been involved in land use applications, planning commission hearings are a lousy place to try and decide technical issues. They, they just are. People are all worked up about the land use, and it's difficult to have a fair discussion about engineering, and that's why we were trying to separate the two issues. So, I think that's helpful, or, I'm gonna say, I hope it's helpful to you. Uh, you don't have a legal obligation to approve this, you don't have a legal obligation to direct staff to work with us on it, but we were hoping you'd do so, so we can come back with a full-blown development agreement, and you can take a look at it, and if you like it, you can approve it. If you don't, you don't, it's our, it's our risk, not yours.
But there, there is a legal obligation not to break the existing system, is that correct? I mean, you can't build something that's gonna have raw sewage coming up through a manhole cover somewhere else in the city.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And David can surely give you a good explanation of what the legal obligations are, but from my perspective, I'd like, I'd like us to be able to work cooperatively with the city to identify what our obligations are, to agree how we're gonna meet them, and to identify what the city's role in meeting their obligation, obligations might be. That's, that's frankly the beauty of a development agreement. It, it lets you have a reasoned discussion about who does what, uh, separate from the emotion attached to a land use application.
Yeah. My, my greatest concern right now is the nebulous nature of the costs. I mean, I've heard several different, I've heard that several different ways just this evening.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'm, I'm not sure where those are gonna land, and how much, uh, it's gonna cost for our staff to be involved in this. I mean, the, the costs are just, yeah, they're coming fast and furious, and I'd be able to keep up on them, so.
Just, I, I think that's a good question, Counselor Johnson. As to the water line, I'm pretty confident what I heard Hans commit to tonight is no more than ninety thousand dollar cost to the city for the water line. Uh, for the sanitary sewer improvements, Hans said he doesn't have an engineered study yet, but he thinks it's about a hundred thousand dollars. That's the kind of information that we would develop more fully and put in the development agreement and bring it back to you. Um, our proposal, Counselor Johnson, would be that we draft the development agreement and give it to David and Pete and Scott to review, so the laboring aura of working up most of the agreement would be our expense, uh, and I'm hopeful we'd be efficient and helpful to staff, so there wouldn't be a lot of staff time involved. There would be some time. Um, but again, I, and my view may not be the prevailing view, you certainly don't have to agree with it, but I've been doing this long enough to know that issues like this are better resolved, working with the engineering staff.
Right.
When you try and resolve it in the, in the heat of a planning commission hearing, you can often resolve it, but when you look at it the next morning, sometimes you wonder how you got to the resolution you did.
Right.
And I, frankly, although I'm a land use lawyer, I don't necessarily enjoy fighting about what a city's obligations or rights are. I'd rather find a solution and help everybody reach it, so at the end of the day, everybody says, we're gonna get a good project out of this, and we feel like we've been thoroughly treated, so.
More, more details, especially along the lines of costs.
Yes, sir.
I would need to see that before I get at all excited about this. I understand the, I understand the benefits, as, as Mr. Tabor has said, but, um, I'd need to see a lot more detail before I could get terribly excited about this.
And that's what I think we would do in the course of developing a development agreement and bring it back to, to council for your review.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight, we appreciate it.
And, and so, all this is contingent upon the planning review passing for the most part? So, you just wanna get this down, and then you're gonna move forward with your, um, planning, going to the planning commission and-
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Nope.
Yes, so, two things I would leave you with on that. It's, it's absolutely contingent on receiving a final land use approval from the city for the design review. You're not, neither this council nor staff would make any commitment about that. We have our burden approved, we hopefully would make a good application that addressed the approval criteria, and it would be approved. Um, but the reason, these are going to be fairly expensive projects, and Hans wants to know what, what we can expect. I mean, again, that, I shouldn't say I mean, I hate, what I go back to is this, it, it's difficult for developers in the course of a land use application to, to address a moving target. The beauty of a development agreement is that both the city and the app, the developer know what's expected of them. Um, then you're not fighting so much over money, and frankly, if you think back on the land use hearings, that's what a lot of the fights are about from a developer's perspective. What's my, how much am I gonna have to spend on this? By doing a development agreement, you know upfront what the obligations are and what your costs are, and then it's up to the planning commission to decide if we've, to decide if we've met the land use approval criteria.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Hello, all right.
One last thing. Um, everything we've done, working with Hans and, and going over things with civil engineering, I try to give you best common sense things that are best for the city when I come up and speak to you at all times, and I think this development has the potential for winning on both sides, for improving our system, and I just want you to keep that in mind on that. I think it's a good common sense approach to take it off private property, run it to where we need it, and to improve our capacities, and, and I look at that at a very point-blank way, so, thank you.
So, you want direction?
If you're willing to give it.
You guys are comfortable making some kind of directional move for staff, or you just wanna mull us over and reconvene, or what do you, what-
Well, I think the, that they have already offered to, for the most part, um, I'd like to move forward, I'd like to have them do a final presentation or, on this memorandum, and come back to city council after working with Scott Tabor and, and city staff, and come back to us again. And if they wanna do all the work, or the majority of the workforce, and answer the questions that we have had tonight, and I think especially keying it at the, what our maximum amounts that we will, the city would be responsible for at some point, ninety thousand is the number I heard, everything else is be picked up by them, I think that's great.
Well, I think we need to have a little more discussion amongst ourselves on it first to, 'cause I've got, um, I got a few things I'd like to bring up. Um, so I'd like to just have a little more discussion on it before we make a decision or ask them to come back with more information.
Another work session?
No, no, I mean, I'm, I think we could do it tonight.
Oh, okay.
Um... So, I ask, you want me, you want me to go into some of this, I didn't wanna go into it if you didn't, if the group didn't wanna discuss it further. Um, you know, a lot of the things that were said make good sense. Um, some of the things that I think about make it not look like it makes a lot of sense. Um, just some rough numbers and trying to scale things out off of maps, um, it looks like if the water line itself is moved off of their property onto our property, it's gonna be probably a two hundred thousand dollar gain in property for them, because it'll then be buildable property, and probably a four hundred thousand dollar loss for us. Because when you start, it don't, twenty feet wide don't sound like much, but when you figure twenty feet, eleven hundred and fifty feet long, all of a sudden, that's the size of three or four of our residential lots. It may be really narrow, but it's about the same square footage. Uh, most of our residential lots are five thousand or seventy-two hundred square feet. This is twenty-three hundred square feet. So, when I look at it, okay, well, yeah, they're willing to do this, and it's only gonna cost us ninety thousand dollars, well, that's our hard costs, but we're giving up four hundred thousand dollars worth of property. That makes it not look quite so good to me. Um, you know, and in respect to, uh, Mr. Tabor's, well, then it's on city property. Well, there has been discussion about that not being city property. At that point, yes, there would be an advantage to having a water line through there, but then would we take that and withhold that and keep that a city property and not sell that property and leave it as a right-of-way or something like that? Um-
You'd be reserved, yeah, I mean-
There's different ways you could do it.
You'd be reserved, if you sold it, right, you'd have to reserve an easement in order to access it.
Or it could be divided.
As it, as its own tract or-
As its own tract, and the city, but, and the city could take, keep ownership of that, and, but that would be that much less property we would have available to sell at that, you know, so I'm, I'm looking at some of these things, and it makes sense to move the water line, but I don't know, we're gonna burden a lot more than the ninety thousand dollars of it. The second portion of it is whatever they're spending on their side, they want it reduced from the SDCs. While the SDCs, a portion of that comes to us.
No, I'm sorry, excuse me. Well, that's, we didn't ask for a reduction in, in the SDCs on our side.
Right, I, I misunderstood them, but-
It's, it's a simple ninety thousand dollars is the city's contribution. There is no reduction in SDCs from what we spend on the water line.
But on the sewer line, that's what, that's where I think we can-
No, sewer area.
I, I believe there was something in there that they were asking-
Instead of the ninety thousand dollars, instead of the city funding it, it could be a reduction in the SDCs, a credit, a credit that we-
A credit, a credit.
Yes.
It's, it's money that you'd be, you would have otherwise been entitled to, that you'd be foregoing.
Right.
Right, I mean, but it's not money that's coming, I got it.
Okay, I, I-
We're not asking for additional funds above the ninety, removed from SDCs for our portion of it.
Right. Then I misunderstood that part, okay? So, um, you know, but those, those are my big points, is I just don't, I, I think the cost sharing may appear on the outside to be reasonable and fair, but I think there's, I think we're gonna be losing a lot more money based on property alone than just the ninety thousand dollars.
Can I disagree?
Yeah.
I disagree. Um, that, I don't think they could build anything along that property line anyway, so what, it, it would be an easement that they would put a parking lot either way, if it was on their, if the easement was on their property, it would be a parking lot or something that they could easily dig up if the city ever had to. I don't think, I would assume, could you put a parking lot on top of that if that was something they wanted?
Yeah, generally-
You just can't build a structure on it, correct?
Correct. Correct, that's the general rule, yeah.
Would we be losing out, no, I don't believe so because along that property line there, you couldn't build a building there probably unless you went to a zoning variance or something. You couldn't put it on the property line.
They can, they can. Yes, in commercial, you can.
But you could also put parking strip there, so I don't think it's gonna be a loss, I don't see a loss there. So, just a different point.
One thing I see that is a heck of a lot larger, the 90,000, 180,000, that's a drop in the bucket. We've got a hundred plus million to consider to spend and where are the priorities to spend it first? So I'm a little concerned about, we talked, mentioned a few times about the master plan will be complete in a while, within ten months, in approximately ten months, of which at that time, we're gonna have a whole bunch more information which we can match with the water and sewer master plan to determine what is the best thing. It may be a great deal, but we don't know that until we see the overall picture, and I'm not sure we'll even know then. But hopefully, there'll be a heck of a lot more engineering completed at that time so we can make a better decision. So I'm struggling with the urgency of this question. As far as them working out a proposal that we can look at sometime, as long as Pete tells me there isn't gonna be a hell, heck of a lot of costs in staff helping, okay? If it's a minimal cost, I'm talking about minimal, okay, then I see no reason why not to keep talking about it. But I am concerned about a hundred plus million bucks that we gotta make a decision on.
And I don't think that has anything to do with the proposal in front of us, though. Yes, we do have that huge over our head, but that has nothing to do with what they are bringing to us right now. They're not gonna pay the hundred million, it's not, that has nothing to do with this proposal in front of us.
No, but, I mean, and my question originally was about the sewer master plan.
Right.
And the issue was, this is good, they're upgrading it, it, on paper, got no issues with it, but suppose the sewer master plan comes and says, you know, you should've put a fourteen inch pipe down there or an eighteen inch pipe with two nineties or two forty-fives on each intersection. And then, and then, okay, that's what they say. And so then we go to the voters and now we gotta dig up what was done, redo it, we spent time, energy, money, no matter how you slice it or dice it, that's what's gonna happen. So that's my only concern, is the master plan's not back yet and no one can say in this room that it's gonna say, "That's perfect for what the master plan..."
I agree, I agree with you, Mayor.
Okay, hold on a second. If I could speak to that, just briefly.
And your name, sir?
I'm John Lewis and I'm the project manager for Mr. Taborson. The study that we've done on the sewer is exactly the same type of study that'll be done in the master plan. They take the zoning and the area and they max it to absolutely what's allowed there. And then they use those calculations to stress the system at a max. So when they come in and do this master, sewer master study for your master plan, they're gonna do the same thing and they're gonna come up with the same calculations on the flow because they're basing it all on what's existing, on your zoning and the acreage that's there. This isn't theoretical, it's all based on absolutes. So that won't change. When the engineers come in and they do the same exact study and they're gonna take the same zoning, they're gonna take the same acreage, and they're gonna come up with the same calculations when they stress the system, and they're gonna come up with basically this repair here. Now, further down the line, what takes place past where our study is, is what really is covered by us paying a half million dollars in SDCs to the county and our sewer development fees, that's why we pay those, is so that we're taking care of the system, covering the cost of our capacity input into the system. When we add that capacity, we're paying development fees to develop that sewer system further down the line to be able to handle that. Now, there were some issues here that we went above and we did the study, and like I said, when you do your study, they're gonna come up with the same thing because they're gonna base it on exactly the same thing we base it on. We haven't just, you know, picked numbers out of the sky. We use the zoning master plan the city has, the acreage that's there, we come up with the maximum amount of occupants that could possibly be at any point, and then they calculate that. And that's what is gonna come out of the master plan. So that's not, and I know you're looking at longevity and you're saying, "Well, what happens if you go and do all of this?" And then the master plan comes out and they say, "Well, no, we want something a little bit bigger." Well, they're not going to because we've done that work, we've done exactly what they're gonna do, so we've come up with the absolute maximum that that system is gonna need based on the way the city is zoned right now. And we can't, you know, imagine, well, they might change this to a different zone, that's, and really, that's what you're here for, is to say, "No, you can't do that because our system won't take it when we designed it, you can't make that, you know, a higher capacity multifamily, it would put too much stress on the system." So, you know, your concerns, I understand, but we've done the homework and we're ahead of it on this. Now, the other thing is that we are proposing to pay for all of this, so there is no cost to the city to do this section. It relieves that surcharging problem that exists currently and gives it capacity for all future development in the basin, and it's our cost. So even if you came back with a master plan that said, "You know what, this needs to be a fourteen inch," that was something that you would end up having to do. You wouldn't have paid for any of this, so it really isn't something that you've gone out of pocket for, paid, and are now paying to do again. We've taken care of all of that. And I can almost assure you, it's almost an impossibility for them to come up with a different calculation than they've already done because they're using the same data to come up with those calculations.
All of that may be 100% true, but whoever we hire to do the sewer master plans will work for us, you don't.
Yeah, I understand that.
And maybe, you may come out, it'd be apples and apples, and everything you say will be 100%.
Right.
But I'd much rather hear that from somebody that works for us, and you don't work for us.
True, but, you know, it's not gonna be fair for the city council to ask us to wait, you know, ten months for a study to be done before we even start looking to build on our property. So, I mean, we can't, you know, we also, we have to be able to, you know, we have a time, you know, some time constraints, I mean, that we would be up against. So, you know, we would like to wait ten months, but that's why we went ahead and did this study, was so that we could move forward on the project. And again, like I said, this is something that we propose to pay all of the costs for and still pay our SDCs, which should be covering those costs. And the last thing I wanted to say was, there was some discussion about the water line and that, you know, we are gaining a $200,000 benefit while the city's incurring a $400,000 loss, and that's really not true because we're not obligated to upsize. The capacity of that water line will fully handle our development. And the only reason that we're offering to move it to the property line there is to get it out of the middle of our development so that if something in the future happens, we don't have the city in there tearing apart our parking lot, replacing a line that we're not very comfortable with because it's a sixty-year-old asbestos line running through the center of the development. But we can build around it and still utilize it. It's a huge benefit for the city for us to replace it because it is part of the water master plan to replace that asbestos pipe, and it's really needed to be upsized to give the capacities in that intermediate zone that are necessary. So there's a huge upsize to the city to move it. And as you said, there's setback requirements on those property lines, that you put the easement there and they're already a setback that they can't build within, so you really don't devalue the property by running an easement there.
The property you're moving it to would have no setbacks on it?
Okay, well, there'd have to be some type of a setback because we would be on the property line with our buildings and you wouldn't be able to be right up against our buildings with the... So, the thing is, is we just wanna understand that, you know, we're gonna take care of this, the city isn't gonna have any costs in it. And in this master plan, we're talking about a $300,000 pipe that we are offering to install for $90,000.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, that was good. Mr. Mayor, could I make a suggestion that council might find helpful? I think you've asked good questions, Council, I'm sorry, is it Sigmund? Thank you. I think you asked some valid questions. If I were in your chair, I'd wanna ask the same questions. And Council Johnson, I fully, it would not surprise you to learn that's what you said tonight, it's not the first time I've heard that. So I think that's a fair way to proceed. Would Council feel, here's my proposal. If you would direct staff to work with us to develop a draft development agreement and at the same time do a briefing paper that tries to answer some of the questions and then come back to you for another work session. If you like what you see, if you think we're getting close to answering your questions, maybe you have more and we'd be able to answer them, then you could direct staff to work with us to finish a development agreement. If you don't like what you see, if you think there are things that you simply can't get around, for example, your concern, then you just say that's enough, we'll go off and develop the property, we'll use the eight-inch line. If and when the city sells their property, then that developer will have to improve, will have to build a new water line. But maybe that's, maybe that's an appropriate way to proceed, maybe we meet you halfway, we just give staff direction with us, we'll come back with something in draft, try and answer the questions, have another work session, see if you're comfortable with us going further with it. So just a suggestion maybe about how you might wanna proceed.
I'm gonna, I think you just answered the question I was gonna ask, is if the city property to the south was owned by, you know, ABC Incorporated, what would be the plan for that new water line? Where would it go?
Council Reisner, that's a, that's a good question, and I'm not an engineer, but if I'm, if I'm understanding the information I've heard tonight, that, you need to deal with that eight-inch water line because of capacity, not pressure. So if we develop, we leave the eight-inch water line in place, and I think Mr. Tabor's concerns are just access to it, it's gonna be in the middle of the development. I think, if I understood him correctly, he wants to get it somewhere else where city crews can access it more easily. But putting that aside, if it's adequate for us, if ABC buys the city-owned property in the future, I think I'm hearing that that line, that there's gonna have to be more capacity in the intermediate water district. And so ABC, it might not be unexpected for ABC to have to install a line either on their property or out in the road, and listening to Scott's list of utilities are already in the road, I'm not sure you've got room for it. So I'm wondering if the right answer is either an upgraded, an upgraded twelve-inch line is installed in the city by Hans, or in the future, if the city decides to sell that property and it's developed by a commercial developer, they're probably gonna have to dedicate some of that same area for a new water line. Maybe I'm wrong.
No, that's what I'm asking.
That's sort of what I've heard tonight.
But the bottom line is, you guys don't have to do anything. You can still build, and I say around what's existing there.
We would just...
And you would, you know, take care of the sewer as you just mentioned, whatever, and then life goes on.
That's correct, and, perhaps foolishly, we thought it made sense to try and solve the problems that Scott identified for us, get the water line off of our property, upside is to get it into a better location. I suspect, Council Sigmund, we could give you good evidence that shows that in fact the city's value on the property won't be harmed, and that sounds like what you're looking for. So that's one of the reasons I'm suggesting perhaps council might be comfortable with us coming back with sort of a draft development agreement with more answers to your questions. It's hard to answer all of them with nothing other than speculation, but I think we could come back with some good evidence that might, might give you the kind of answers you want to hear before you decide on it.
So if you were to buy ABC properties that already had that nice water line in, that would probably be a bonus to you?
Yeah, I'm not a developer, maybe I should've been, I might've made more money than being a lawyer. But when I, when I have, when I represent commercial clients, they look for sites that are fully served by utilities. They wanna buy sites that they can build on. They're not, most people are not interested in upgrading municipal systems. So if ABC looked at that site and they knew, even though there's an easement in the rear, as David said, you can put landscaping on it, I mean, subject to maintaining the line, or you can put parking over it, but knowing that they've got an intermediate pressure zone with the appropriate line to serve their property, in my opinion, and based on my long experience in Oregon, that's an added value.
Okay.
And Council Sigmund, I'm still saying we owe you a better answer than just my opinion, but...
No, that's fine.
That's what I think the correct answer would be. So, thank you again for your time, just a suggestion about how you might wanna proceed.
Okay, well, when, don't even have staff look at it. Tommy?
Oh, Tom, I'm sorry.
Well, Tommy will say that he's concerned with the staff costs because there's a bunch of other things on the plate also that we needed to accomplish at the same time, and this wasn't in the mix.
Okay.
Two, I'm a little bit concerned about, the overall master plan may match exactly what's here. If they're doing it for nothing, I guess, you know, what to do, we just have to dig it up again, whatever. I'm more towards if that staff cost is minimal, low, okay, then I see no reason why not to keep talking about it. But I would like to see the master plan complete before I have to make a decision on what money's gonna be spent.
Mr. Boyce, how much staff time do you anticipate here? I did a rough guess.
Yeah, well, it's hard to answer that question. Depending what, what information is developed by the group, we may need the city attorney's office to review it, which there will be a cost. We may also need Pat Sissel to review some items. My impression is, and again, this is my impression, that it wouldn't be over the top with staff time. I think my time in it would be minimal, I'd be being updated by the city attorney and the engineer and the public works supervisor. Scott Tabor might have a few hours invested in it. But again, the group said they'd do the heavy lifting with the agreement language, so we'd be reviewing that, not developing that, which makes a big difference. You know, it's just a tough question to answer.
Can I make my proposal on that? Partly because I'm convinced, you know, the city engineer is, we've been around and around on this proposal, I mean, the city engineer is so far out in front and up to speed on this that it'll be a minimal cost. And because I'm so confident as a developer, my proposal is, you know, we'll pick up, you know, the city costs for the time on this. You know, Sissel, you know, they've been through this proposal and so they'll be up to speed, but we'll pay their bill on this. And the other thing is, is, you know, based on calculations, you know, this is not gonna be a cost to the city, you know, if my calculator works and it's pretty good, I'm pretty good at addition, it's gonna bring a $564,000 into the city coffer, plus we're proposing to save you several, you know, $300,000 on a water line. And, you know, I think if you pull a bunch of, number of developers, you can't develop 100% on a site, and the value on this site, you know, you're gonna pick up well over a half million dollars in value to have a site with infrastructure on it. And, you know, my... And, you know, my... So, anyway, we'll pick up the cost on that. You guys give us a... We can, you know, talk to the city and see what the proposal...
Can I stop you on that? Here's the matter. So, we're back into the same pitch.
Yeah.
Does the city have a mechanism for doing it, for accepting payment?
Sure. We could definitely invoice them, keep track of everyone's time, the city attorney's mine, Scott's, Sissel Engineering, and we could receive that money in.
Do you need a letter of intent or a contract or anything like that? As long as it goes forward, best the city attorney would...
No, I mean, I think, you know... No, you don't. I mean, you've got a representation here tonight. You technically would arguably have a contract already. Yes, normally speaking, I would wanna have a... I would want, you know, if you decide to move forward, of course. Normally, in the abstract, yeah, you always want something in writing. In this case, I mean, frankly, to the extent that there's an invoice submitted, now maybe, you know, you had some discussion about, wow, I wasn't expecting that. But, you know, if it weren't paid, I think that would do some pretty serious damage to the trust level here. So, I personally don't think that's necessary.
As long as it's a zero cost to the city, I'm fine with moving forward with what they're talking about.
I really would like to not make a decision on this. We don't have to make a decision on it. And they can move forward as they need to do. One of the things that was mentioned is they've been working on this for the past 10 months or whatever. They've done their homework. We don't have that luxury right now. As Tom mentioned, it's gonna be 10 months. It's interesting that it's about the same amount of time that it's gonna take us to get our master plans as what they've spent working on this project. So, I'm really leaning towards doing nothing, but I don't wanna shut 'em out and not continue having the discussion. If we're not looking at costs to the city and if city staff feels that staff has the time to put forward on this, 'cause I know that they're overwhelmed in all of the sectors that'll be looking at it, I would accept moving forward with discussion and see if there is an agreement that could be made.
Okay. Pat?
I'd move that the city spends some money and get this done, but not that that's gonna happen. The master plan already has been held up three months because when it went out to bid, nobody bid on it. So, we're talking in the best light 10 months, and we may end up again in... When this period is done for the RFPs, that nobody bids again. So, then the 10 months could stretch a lot longer than I think it's fair for these folks to do. I think it's a phenomenal development. I think it's a win for the city. And if they cap our costs at the $90,000 that they have said they are willing to do and the other improvements, we should move forward on it.
I'm confused as to moving forward means... Is it Mr. Robinson's last recommendation or, you know, offer to...
Right. Have Pete and Dave work through the proposal.
Really come back and we would...
And then come back with the final numbers and answer some of the questions we had.
Right. Have more answers and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's all I...
And you... So, I wanna reiterate. I mean, you're not even giving us direction as we've asked for. One way or the other. And if the direction is go forward in the vein that Mike proposed, you're still gonna come back with a draft that you're gonna get to look at. Perhaps maybe some or all of the questions that have been asked would be answered. Maybe not to your satisfaction, but at least there'd be an answer. And you'd have at that point, again, the opportunity to say, "Yeah, I'm sorry. This just doesn't, for whatever reason, work for me." So, nothing you do tonight other than just, and really, if the costs are gonna be borne by the developer, then, you know, at this point, you're really just saying, "Yeah, continue talking," and then come back to us and...
Well, I'm on board with that.
All right. Well, you got your marching orders. You can continue to work on the proposal, answer some of the questions. And just a couple of things for the developer from my end of it. Maybe considering that proposal, just addressing what it means for you to run that water line on your side of the property line to a point where it has to cross back over to city property, what that does for us and what it does for you. I'd like to see that. And, you know, just do what you can. And Pete and Dave will talk to us, and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the good information. It's been suggested, and since I turned it down the last time, we are gonna take a short break. A five-minute break, okay? Okay. Everybody's back. We are readierning our work session and going to topic number three, which is city council training, which will be provided by our city attorney, Dave Duffman.
Okay. So...
Davy. Also known as Davy there.
Davy.
I said Dave. I didn't say Davy.
No.
We're getting...
Keeping and keeping and, you know, tradition. Okay. So, I wanna just kinda really, as I just mentioned, you know, kinda keep my part of this fairly broad and fairly overview-ish. There is a lot here. And I certainly am gonna take any questions you have, however specific they might be, and hopefully I can answer them. We do this for all our clients and, you know, usually when there's been a decent amount of turnover in a city council. And so, you've had that recently. And in talking with Pete and talking with all of you, it seemed, okay, well, that makes some sense to talk about this now. So, I'm just gonna kinda follow along here and go through this as it's laid out in your packet. Talk briefly a little bit about authority. That's something that is sort of, you know... You think about the federal government as a constitution. The state government has a constitution. And really, in many ways, the city has its own constitution as well. And that's the city charter. Not every part of the country works the same way that Oregon does or that the way that Gladstone and the 242 other cities in Oregon work. And that's the difference. And we talk about this sometimes. You hear this word thrown around, home rural authority. And that's compared to a concept that we talked about in law school called Dillon's Rule. The difference really is home rural authority, which you have, which all Oregon cities have, basically says, so long as state law doesn't prohibit us from doing something or says we can't, then we can do it. Dillon's Rule is the exact opposite in a way. Dillon's Rule says unless the state tells us we can do something, we have no authority to do it. So, as you move out west and you get further west, the idea of home rural authority becomes much stronger. And basically, one of the interesting ways this comes up, and you'll be looking at this next month, an ordinance dealing with medical marijuana facilities. You have these situations that come up, and medical marijuana is a really good example, where you're sort of trying to figure out, does the city under its home rural powers have the authority to, let's say, ban them or regulate them in a particular way? Or is that something that state law says, nope, you guys don't get to touch that. We're calling the shots on that? So, in any other... Well, in many other states, a city is constantly looking to say, "Hey, if we wanna ban," in this case, "a use," does state law allow us to do that or not? And here, what you're looking for is to say, "Hey, we can do it unless state law says we can't." So, that authority is pretty important. The charter then goes through and lays out, you know, various aspects of how that authority is exercised, okay? So, it has language that talks about administrative authority. And by and large, that's vested in the person to my right, the city administrator. Supervising departments, that's within the purview of the city administrator. That's something that your charter says, we're gonna delegate that authority to him or her. The only part of your charter, the only thing in your charter in terms of his administrative authority that it doesn't cover is the municipal judge and the city attorney. So, that is basically kinda directly reporting, if you will, to the council.
Question on that.
Sure.
Does that also include the city attorney that we hire for court?
Or the prosecutor?
Prosecuting attorney?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, it's a... I mean, your charter doesn't get very specific about that. I mean, it just talks about a city attorney. I believe that it would be. I mean, I think that they're performing a function that we, for a variety of reasons, just don't perform, our office. But there would be nothing, and in some cities, you know, that city attorney, whether they're in-house or they're contracted, they do it all, you know, including prosecution. So, I think that is part of that, yes.
But it doesn't... Wouldn't it include indigent... Am I saying that right?
Indigent, defense?
Defense.
No. First of all, they wouldn't be, you know, they wouldn't be acting on your behalf.
Right.
And that only comes up as a matter of when... If somebody is... As part of a process here could be... Could do any jail time.
Right.
They're entitled to it or to an...
Okay. So, you're firming in, like I say, whoever we have that's doing...
The prosecution.
The prosecution.
Mm-hmm. And then the judge of course as well.
Thank you.
So, just to expand on that a little bit, in the past, administration has contracted with an individual to perform that function. Is that something that should come before council for approval, that contract?
You know, usually the way I look at that is something that it would probably, you know, should have at least the input of council on. I mean, I think that, you know, having, you know, if the process is basically, we're gonna, you know, we're thinking of hiring this person to provide the prosecution services, you know, what are your thoughts on that? So, ideally, yeah. I think ideally you'd have a council involvement in that service. Certainly, and I don't mean to diminish the services that a prosecutor provides, but, you know, when it comes to who sits in this chair and what firm provides you or if it's an in-house lawyer, I mean, that you'd need to be intimately involved in.
Bless you. One other question. Who is in charge of our boards? It doesn't specify in the charter. They're not employees. They're not departments. We appoint 'em?
I think it's a matter of your code spelling that out, right? I mean, I think your code talks about appointments to the library board, Parks Board.
Right.
Theoretically, there'd be no reason why...
Planning Commission?
Planning Commission, correct. Planning Commission, actually, in state law, you have some duty by statute to be involved in that appointment. But you could theoretically delegate that process to the city administrator. But, you know, given the policy that's involved in a lot of those boards, I think it's most... Every city that I work with has council involvement in that. And your charters are not material. I mean, most city charters are pretty, you know... A little more on the administrative authority, hire and fire. Anybody that sits in that role has the ability to make those determinations, some of those positions. And I think this becomes a judgment call for that administrator. You know, would be wise to have input from the council, but as a technical legal matter with many of those hiring decisions, that's what you hired administrator to do. Removal department head, same kind of issue, flip side of that coin. There are some that require council, in your charter, council input. So, that's basically, there's this silo of administrative authority that the city has, city possesses, and in its charter, basically delegates most of those duties to the city administrator. And then the city administrator can sub-delegate some of that. And, you know, I'm sure does to a greater or lesser degree on a regular basis, and that's perfectly lawful.
So, I have a question.
Sure.
So, the city administrator hires and fires directors. Is there any input? Any place where the city council gets input, or is that absolute?
No, there are. There are. I wish I had...
Is it police that you...
Right. So, the city council's input on the hiring and removal of all department heads, including the assistant city administrator. So, technically, the way it would work, the administrator could set up a selection committee for a department head. You know, we're contemplating what process to use on the police chief right now. But after that decision is made by the selection committee, which most likely would include a city council or it's not required, I'd have to come to city council and seek your approval of that decision. So, and if we're removing a department head, I need to consult with city council prior to that action.
So, is that in the code then, or is that a courtesy, or is it legal, or what do you think?
I believe it's in the city charter.
Yeah, the charter speaks to it, and the code elaborates on it. I mean, your code really has a lot more detail about, okay, so this is sort of the nuts and bolts of what the city administrator's authority is.
Okay. So, if the process goes complete, there's a committee for choosing a director. They say, choose this person. You say, choose this person. It gets to city council. City council says, no. What happens then?
Well, I believe we have to go back to the pool.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think it specifies that a committee has to be set up, but that's the usual course of action.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, any more questions on the administrator? Okay. So, I wanna get into enactments, how you actually exercise council authority. You know, that happens in a variety of ways. Ordinances, I think, you know, you're all familiar with them. The best way to think about it is you're legislating. You are essentially creating law, broadly applicable law, the law of the city of Gladstone. Most of these are put into this guy. Most ordinances get codified, but they don't have to. That's not a requirement. It doesn't mean that it's any less of a law if you don't codify it. And sometimes there are things that you choose not to do. And in fact, next month, when you consider the medical marijuana ordinance, that's an example of where I'm recommending you don't codify that immediately because you're still gonna have a ban in place. So, we can talk about the specifics of that when we get to it. And then state law says there are certain things you just must do by ordinance, even things that I think are more administrative, like when you change a zone on a piece of property. Administrative or a third angle is an order. I don't think of that as legislative, but state law says, really care what you think. That's what you gotta do it in the form of an ordinance. So, that's one example of where state law can trump. There are... Basically, the way your charter works, again, pretty common here, is that you would, in order to enact an ordinance, you would have a reading at two separate hearings or meetings. But you don't have to. If a council that's present unanimously were to approve having both readings in one meeting, your charter lets you do that. The other thing you can do is your charter assumes, and if you say nothing to the contrary, then the ordinance is not effective for 30 days, but the council can choose to shorten that period or eliminate it entirely and make something effective immediately if the charter refers to, you know, special circumstances are present. Normally, what we say is, is there a really, really pressing reason to do so? We call those emergencies, but they're less than necessarily, you know, a buildings-on-fire type emergency. It's really, is there a compelling reasonable reason to have it take effect in less than 30 days? And if so, the council's free to do that. Administrative decisions, really, that's what I think of as what resolutions do. So, if you're setting fees, for example, adopting your budget, SDCs, SEC methodologies, how you calculate the SEC, there's a variety of things that you might do through a resolution as opposed to an ordinance. And again, if you think about it, you know, things that are gonna be in an ordinance or ultimately end up here, it's supposed to be something that's much like a set of statutes that someone can look at and say, okay, here's how my conduct is gonna be governed in the city of Gladstone. When you're talking about a fee, you're talking about a methodology, it's really not governing anybody's conduct. Makes a lot more sense to be putting that into a resolution. Benefit of that, there, you know, you read it by title, you adopt it in one meeting, it's effective immediately. They don't have the formality that an ordinance does. Then, one other thing that my materials left out inadvertently, I apologize for that, but when you're acting as like in a... you're acting as like, in a, in a, what I'll call a quasi-judicial capacity, so, uh, you know, you're, you're gonna be ruling, most of the time, this is in a land use context, uh, whether, whatever you do with that application, you prove it, deny it, approve it with conditions, you do that through what I call a, a, an order, and that's something a lot like a resolution, and some cities do it through resolution, uh, but, uh, technically, when you're wearing the, the judicial robe, so to speak, judges issue orders, so. Um, it's mostly form over function, but I think it's cleaner that way. Talk a little bit about the public meetings law, um, and, and, well, let's, before that. Uh, with respect to your, your meetings, okay? So, you go about and you have these meetings, uh, both the public meetings law, but also just good practice suggests that you should be keeping a record of what is said and what's discussed. Uh, so, normally, that's done through meeting minutes. You certainly have meeting minutes, most cities do. One thing that I think, uh, and it's, it's nice to have that, because it's a very easy way to kinda go through and, and determine what was discussed, uh, and everybody kinda knows where to look and look, and, and what, you know, what they're gonna likely find. But you don't have to. You can just rely completely on audio and video to service that record. Again, the downside with that is that if you wanna refresh your memory on what we might've talked about four months ago, you're gonna have to sit down, watch a video, or listen to a tape. But from a legal point of view, you not technically need to have minutes, but I do think it's a very good idea. And the minutes don't have to be a verbatim transcript. In fact, I think, uh, I mean, they're great. The more specificity, the better. I love it when I see your minutes, 'cause they're very detailed, but they can, they certainly can be pretty broad in terms of what was discussed. Uh, as Kim pointed out, the council has rules, uh, and, uh, there's nothing that says you have to follow Roberts' rules. That gets thrown around a lot, that there's some legal requirement that you do so. They're just a, essentially, a, a very well-worn, well-tested set of parliamentary rules that makes the discussion among seven people, uh, or five people, or whatever the number may be, uh, you know, that much easier and more predictable. You have your own set of council rules. Uh, I don't plan on spending really much time in them, uh, but you defer when, basically, the rules don't answer how we get from point A to B, refer to, you defer to Roberts' Rules of Order. Um, they can be, you know, really complicated, and people get very high-centered on some of the real niceties, and, and I frankly think that that can sometimes just get in the way of, you know, arriving at a decision as you would just like normal human beings. But, um, when it, that can't happen. It's nice to have that there as a way to say, okay, here's how we're gonna resolve this logjam. This is how this works. Uh, we'll talk a little bit here about, um, roles of counselors in, in meeting, in a meeting setting. Uh, well, first of all, quorum, I think we all understand that. There's gotta be at least four of you to, to legally do anything. So, if there are three of you, uh, that can present some sort of uncomfortable moments when, and I don't think it's ever happened here. I have seen that at other councils, though, uh, where you've got a room full of people and you're just sort of, "Sorry, we all gotta go home," uh, but that is truly what must happen. Uh, your charter says you've gotta hold meetings once a month, and at a certain time and place. You've changed that recently to be six-thirty, kudos. Um, one thing I wanna just briefly touch on, and I get this question, uh, from time to time, is, okay, so, what happens if there are four of us and we are just, you know, A, we're at the grocery store, and, you know, we see each other, "Oh, there's, we have a quorum," you know, uh, or, or even, even maybe more likely, uh, or at least with, with, you know, the intent of four of you getting together to socialize. Is that something that we have to put out a public notice and hold it in this room and invite, you know, anybody that wants to come and listen to you talk? No. You, you can still socialize, and the, the, the risk there is that it's, as we all know, you know, it's hard for people that do what you do and are intimately involved in the goings-on of your, of your community to not have some discussion. It's like this elephant that's in the middle of this otherwise social event. So, you can do it, but you gotta stick to topics that really have nothing to do with the city. And I submit to you that that can be pretty difficult. So, we usually say, try to avoid those situations as much as you can. I mean, if you run into each other and it's four of you at the grocery store, you don't have to all run, running for the exits, you know, different exits. But you wanna be careful.
So, there was a, um, court case, and I'm sorry, I can't quote it, uh, that was, I believe, the Portland Public School Board, um, and what matters of the day were, and the state attorney general ruled that a quorum can be present in a social setting, and that matters of the day may be discussed in that social setting. He went on to say, "Look, there's a, there's a appearance issue here."
Mm-hmm.
But that this was legal. And I'm wondering where this also tends to bump into the First Amendment right to freedom of speech and right to assembly and some of those types of things.
Sure.
This may be a topic that we could, we could talk about for the next six hours. I don't wanna do that, but I'm just curious, the overall, where this falls in.
Well, the, the, the free speech issue could probably occupy a lot of time.
Yeah.
Um, so I, if you don't mind-
Absolutely.
-I'll, I'll demure on that one. As far as bumping up to where you may be getting into your, you know, what, and there's a case, actually, that we talk about, uh, on the next page, maybe I'll just sort of get there, um, where in, in Lane County-
Dumdi and Handy.
Yeah, right, the Dumdi case down out of Lane County. It didn't get any further than the circuit court, so it's, it's not one of these, we usually start thinking of what we, you know, when you hear us talk about precedent, is that, is that gonna set a precedent? When it comes to court cases and court opinions, we don't think of anything really establishing a precedent until it gets to at least the Court of Appeals, right? And we get an opinion out of the Court of Appeals, and then, okay, now we've got something that we need to, you know, uh, be, be very cognizant of. That's, 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 that's binding law. Uh, so this didn't ever get that far, but, and there's been a number of critiques about it, but basically what happened was you had, uh, Lane County commissioners, less than a quorum, mind you, uh, so not even really necessarily your facts, uh, talking outside of a meeting about a topic that, related to the budget, that they knew was gonna be put in front of them, front and center, at a duly noticed public meeting. And there were emails, and there were, you know, conversations through intermediaries, and, and, but basically, it all was trying to get, I think, one of those two to vote a certain way when the time- and I don't know that, that the words "vote a certain way" were used, but in the totality of what the court reviewed, they said, "Look, you know, what you're essentially doing right now is deliberating towards a decision, and you're doing that outside of a public meeting." Um, and the thing that they really kinda, that, the judge in that case hung his hat on, was the fact that the, the, it was part of the budget. The budget was gonna be coming before you. There's no way you can say that, "Oh, this was some abstract thing, we had no idea that, you know, that this would be a, a, an item, a set of, you know, whatever it might be, an issue, that we're gonna have to, you know, consider and, and take a vote on." It was the budget. And so, you know, it's some pretty specific facts there in terms of, the judge said, "You violated the public meetings law," and found the, in the, in the context of, of going through this, the, the Lane County Attorney, the council, Lane County Council advised them that, "I think what you're doing is, is, is likely a violation of the public meetings law," and they, I think, continued to do it after that point. So, the court said, "You violated the public's meetings law, and there's personal liability for you, uh, uh, to, um, board members as a result of it." The county got tagged as well, but, but the, I think the, I don't know-
Twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Twenty thousand for each of them.
Twenty thousand each to the county, right.
Commissioner, twenty thousand dollars personally.
Yeah. So, just two of them were getting together, chatting about the budget, and they got dinged, is that what? Because I know, 'cause I read in the paper all the time where-
It's-
-Hales gets together with one of his commissioners, and they sit down and chat about, you know, the, whatever's gonna be on the-
Yeah.
-the, uh, agenda for their meetings.
It had more to do with, less about, I, I, and this is where there's a lot of criticism of the case. So, I don't, and it's not, I don't, the reason I made that point about being, being precedent is because it's just a, an opinion from, again, I'm sure, very fine judge, but it's just a, Lane County judge that on these facts said, "This looks like a public meeting." That we don't have any Court of Appeals or Supreme Court authority that says, "Yes, you shall do this in this way, or in, under these set of facts, this is a violation." Uh, and I think one of the criticisms is because, number one, of that question, like, well, you know, less than a quorum can talk about a lot of substantive issues all the time. That doesn't turn every one of those discussions into a public meeting. In this case, the judge, I think, was, was particularly troubled by the fact that the discussions included basically vote wrangling. You know, "I, I want you to vote this certain way." Um, and I think, and again, I'm not privy to what those particulars were, but there was something in that record that was pretty clear to the judge, that it was more than just a discussion about the pros and cons of a budget line item here or there, and more about, you know, "The two of us are gonna vote this way, and therefore, you know, either this part of the budget would fail, or it would succeed," and the judge says, and I tend to agree, if the facts were that stark, that, you know, having that type of, uh, negotiation or, or spirited discussion about how one's gonna vote, uh, relative to a particular set of facts, is something that probably, very likely, should be done in a public meeting. I, I also think the fact that it's less than a quorum is somewhat troubling, from a, from a legal point of view, you know, because, uh, we often take the tack that you really don't have a public meeting if you're, if, to me, it's sort of a decision one to both ways, and that's what I find a little bit more troubling almost than the, than the vote wrangling part. It's just that, well, you know, if, if it's less than a quorum that's meeting, how do you ever get to a public, a public meeting? But, so I wouldn't, move it this way, wouldn't, I wouldn't stress out about this case by any means, but I think it is illustrative of, of sort of making sure, certainly, if you have four of you together, that you're, you're being conscious of what you're discussing. And issues of the day notwithstanding, uh, I think the more specificity you start putting on those things, and certainly, like, well, you know, uh, you know, if I were counsel and I'm out with Kim, and I'm, I'm basically saying, "Well, you know, why would you ever think of voting this way?" You know, "You should vote this way." Uh, and there's, there's four of us together, I think that starts to get well into the public meeting issue, but-
But the, the, the discussion about less than a quorum, that's, I've not heard this before. This is new.
It, we were, we sort of shook our heads on it, you know, because I think normally, the idea is, is that you can get a, a wide amount of, of leeway if you're talking about something less than a quorum, in terms of what's eligible for discussion.
Okay.
So, a little bit more on the public meetings law. Uh, I wanna stress this point. I think this is something that some people, uh, often get wrong. It's, it's a, it's a right to attend, it's a right to observe. That's what the public meetings law grants to participants. It's, it's not, oh, to, to, to citizens, to residents. It's not a right to participate. There's nothing in the public meetings law that says anybody has a right to come before you and, and even talk. Now, I'm not saying you wouldn't allow people to talk, it's a very good idea to allow people to talk. Uh, but from a, you know, you'll hear that sometimes, "Well, this is a public meeting, and, and damn it, I have a, a right to speak to you." And under the public meetings law, they don't. Um, they do, uh, have a right to speak, to speak, uh, with respect to, to certain topics, okay? So, in, in, other, other laws give them that right in, in certain situations. Uh, land use is, is probably, uh, Exhibit A, right? There's a requirement to have public hearings and, and have testimony, and leave record open, and, you know, so that process is, is loaded with that. Um, when you adopt a budget, you gotta have that time for the public to come in and, and speak to the budget. When you adopt fees, new fees, new charges, uh, you, it's not so much a hearing per se, but you do have to allow for public comment, okay? And all those things have to happen in public meetings. So, there are times where the public has a right to actually testify, but that right doesn't descend from the, the public meetings law. Executive sessions, you know, I know a little bit about that, uh, just a closed session with the council, um, all dictated by state law. You can't, so this is another example, public meetings, public records, uh, state law preempts you from doing something, uh, you couldn't be more secretive than public, than, than, than state law allows. So, that, it sort of sets a floor. You can, you could provide a lot more transparency. You could say, for instance, that we're gonna have a local rule that says, regardless of whether state law gives somebody the right to speak, everybody has the right to speak to us on any topic whatsoever, at an amount, and for a time that they choose. I don't know, you wouldn't wanna do that, but, so there's an example where you could provide essentially more participation. Um, but, uh, executive sessions are one of those situations where there's a very limited amount of topics that we can cover. Uh, litigation, if you're in the middle of a lawsuit, or there's one that's likely to be filed, uh, certain personnel matters, real estate transactions, um, generally speaking, advice from your lawyer, if it's in writing, uh, exempt documents, exempt from public inspection. Those things you can consider in an executive session. Uh, but, you know, if it's, if it's something where it's just, "Man, this is gonna be a really, really difficult conversation, and we'd really like to not have it in front of the public," that's not one of the, it's not one of the, the boxes that I can go down and check and say, "Yeah, that's..." But I, you know, people ask that. So, um, I will say, and I don't, and the, the attorney general has said this is absolutely, uh, appropriate. Um, if, when those situations come up, the first thing I kinda wanna know is, is there a legal issue involved? Because to the extent there's a legal issue involved, that that could be something that I, or someone in our office, or your city attorney, or whoever it might be, could, could provide advice on, and again, that could serve as the basis for the executive session. But it would be limited to that, the legal aspect of whatever that problem is.
So, there's, there's, there's no chance of having the medical marijuana discussion in executive session, then?
Well, really, you know, it, no, uh, but, but, uh, there is a possibility of talking about an aspect of that, right? Like, this whole idea of, of, you know, preemption and what the risks are. That could potentially be.
Legal advice.
We could help. Yeah, we, you're right, legal advice. But a lot of that, you know, too, I mean, and I think you guys do a pretty good job of that. I mean, there is an aspect of, you know, wanting the public to know what, you know, the city attorney is advising as well, and how you're taking that advice. So, you know, usually, I don't suggest that something is discussed in executive session unless I feel that you have some liability behind some of that advice, potentially, you know, that there's some legal exposure. Then I think, yeah, let's, let's talk about this privately first, and then figure out, you know, whether it makes sense to roll that out in some publicly. Um, okay, public records. Uh, first thing to, to note there is, is that every person, doesn't matter where they live in Oregon, they could live in, in, in Bhutan, um, has a right to inspect public records. The motive is irrelevant, their need for them is irrelevant, um, except if, there's a, basically, public records, the way that the law works, is that everything that the city may possess, that's in writing, in an email, in a digital format, a video, an audio tape, you name it, uh, the, the definition is extraordinarily broad, even includes voicemails, believe it or not, um, are assumed to be, uh, presumed to be subject to disclosure, if someone asks. You can set up a process for it, have forms, have fees to defray the costs of answering public records requests. The assumption is, though, that everything you possess is, is subject to inspection. However, the law contains, I think on the last count, it's like sixty-some exemptions to that general proposition, okay? And, uh, so there are times where the motive of a, of a, of a requister could be considered. And what you're basically doing is if it, if what they're asking for would fall into, let's say it's a, uh, I'm trying to think of a good example here. Oh, uh, you know, maybe a, uh, some type of, of, of employee record, all right? Uh, most, if not all of those, are gonna be exempt from inspection. There are some aspects that probably are, um, allowed, but the, you would go through and look at that exemption, and you would say, "Okay, well, uh, there's a, it, it requires a sort of weighing of interests, the interests in the public, having knowledge of whatever it is that they're seeking against, it could be the privacy of the individual." Um, but in that calculation, if you're, and really, none of you would ever be asked to do this, but I think it's good to sort of have an idea of how this process works. You know, staff, my office would talk, and we'd say, "Okay, well, you know, is there really a compelling public interest that's gonna be served by disclosing this piece of information to this individual?" Or, you know, is, do we have some knowledge of how this person may attempt to use this information? Um, so it, it, I don't wanna say that it's just a flat-out, you know, you never consider, you know, who the person is, why they're asking. But by and large, uh, we've had clients that have had a process that- But by and large, we've had clients that have had a process that, like on their form itself, said, please state, you know, the legitimate reasons you were asking for this record. And that was problematic, because upfront, that's really not something that you're allowed to ask, so. As I mentioned, the definition of public records, very broad. There's social media, you know, I don't know that, does the city have any, like Facebook or the library to... Library, okay. So, that can be problematic. I think people are getting more understanding of how Facebook works and how these things are archived, but, you know, for instance, they're, in my recommendation, in my estimation, I feel that when it comes to social media pages, and let's just look at Facebook as maybe the primary example here, from a public records point of view, really, everything that's said on that page should be preserved somehow. Now, I know Facebook, I don't have a Facebook account, because I understand it, you know, you have this timeline of all the stuff that you posted and it's always accessible, you can go back to your first post and look at your wall and all that stuff. But you have a, cities have an obligation to have some sort of retention of that as well. You can't just sort of say, well, you know, it's in the cloud somewhere in a Facebook server. So, the best practice is really getting a, you know, some way, whether it's printed, you know, periodically printing, I don't know if you can download that stuff to a, you know, to a disk or something and have it locally stored, but in my mind, those are all public records.
Speaking directly to that, there is a site called Nextdoor. It's a social media page. It's Nextdoor Gladstone for this particular one. I have been posting meeting notices on there just as my person, but I still am a city counselor. Now, I have been asked by the administrator of that page to remove old posts. Now, the only thing I do is I go in there and say, there will be a city council meeting such and such date, such and such a time. Here is a link to the city's webpage of that, the packet for that night. Now, am I running afoul by doing that?
I don't think you're running afoul by doing anything, by what you're doing, I mean, the act of actually posting a notice saying there will be a city council meeting.
No, but as far as the public records portion of it...
But I think, I think eliminating them is problematic, yes. I think they should be preserved. I think whether it's city staff, just a social network that they could access...
So, even if it's not a social network...
That you're maintaining.
That we're maintaining.
I think by virtue of the fact that you've got a city counselor, however benign or kind of boring the topic might be about city business, it still relates to city business, right? And that's sort of the touchstone.
Going to jail, ain't I?
I was thinking the same thing.
So, I think from, my sense going forward, if you can have, again, I don't know anything about Nextdoor, but I have heard of it, but if, can, could staff, I mean, all you really need honestly, you know, just screen prints, put them in a file or somehow save them in some way and say, you know, this is going to be subject to this retention.
Okay, it's something as simple as...
Or you could do it.
It's something as simple as just taking a screenshot?
Yep.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be elaborate, but it just, some evidence of the fact that, yeah, this was a record. I think it's quite clearly a public record based on how you're describing it and based on the fact that you're posting it. And, yeah, a copy of that is just fine. So, no, you should not be worried about it. Not a big deal. But I think going forward, that's the best practice.
Okay.
One question about public records is, hey, you know, what's the deadline? How fast do we have to respond to them? And the answer on that is it depends. There is no specific deadline. The, like two legislative sessions ago, there was a, or John Kroger, how long ago was that? A few years ago. The AG's office is making this big push for local governments to have some sort of, you know, ten-day deadline. If it wasn't met, you know, there could be lawsuits flying and all this stuff. It didn't end up being successful, and that may add as much to do with John Kroger as anything else, but the, it's practicable, as soon as practicable and without delay. So, I mean, it really depends upon what the nature of the request is. And that makes perfect sense. I mean, if someone's asking for thousands of documents over a wide range of topics, you're not going to get that done probably in ten days. Someone's asking for two documents and it's extraordinarily focused, you probably can get that done just by sending an email back to them. You know, here it is. So, it depends. The more complicated the request, the longer it would take. And I've not seen much litigation, every once in a while there is, but generated over the fact that, hey, I mean, the Oregonian, I don't know how much, you know, you're following the whole Sylvia Hayes and John Kitchharber, you know, thing pretty closely, but, you know, they were waiting months.
They're still waiting, still waiting.
You know, and...
Except from last, June, July.
So, they have the right to go into court and say, this is not, this is an unreasonable delay and here's why, anybody knows. But I don't think most people take that tact. So, you know, normally, it's just a matter of evaluating how complicated is it and doing your best to meet that obligation to provide them ultimately. One other thing I want to talk about, this is kind of an odd thing in the statute. So, you can get your costs compensated, staff time, copies, all of that. That's, you can, you can write a requister and say, yes, we will start going through that. We have an estimate of what it's going to cost us and here it is. We would require you to put down some sort of down payment or alternatively be ready to pay the final bill before you pick them up. But you have every right to do that. You have the right to charge for my time in going through any documents to determine whether there's any exempt material, so that can be passed on to the requister. One of our clients, a couple of our clients, take a position with these requests, like if they come from the Oregonian or they come from certain folks, they don't charge them at all. I've never really understood that, but, you know, that does happen sometimes. But as far as what you're able to do, what you're authorized to do, you can recoup your costs by and large of responding to public records requests.
Let me understand, you can charge some people but not charge other people?
No, no, that was my point, that you can charge everybody, but some of our clients choose not to charge certain people. And I've, like the Oregonian, they make it a policy to not charge the Oregonian for public records requests.
But they charge other people?
Right.
We don't do that. We charge everybody.
Yeah. I don't, you know, to me, if anybody's in a position to pay the freight, it's the media. You know? So, I mean, but I think, I think there's an element of wanting to keep the media in the good graces of, you know, a city, so. We talked in the materials a little bit about a counselor's right to look at public records and how that works. Generally speaking, our advice has always been, you know, work, well, certainly through the city administrator, but when it comes to larger requests, have the council sort of be involved in that. Because for the sort of same reason, and I, this isn't so much of a legal issue as it is one of, I mean, I would call it a best practice. It can be difficult for a staff member when confronted by a counselor that wants X, Y, and Z documents to, that can be very difficult, to say, well, you know, I have the right to charge you for that, you're an individual, or I think you should go and speak to the rest of the council. You know, they feel a sense of duty and, you know, maybe a sense of, well, you're in a way my boss, so I better respond to that. I think it can put staff in a somewhat uncomfortable position. So, our advice is always, look, if you're talking about something that is either large in nature, certainly if it's something that would be otherwise exempt from public disclosure, I mean, in that case, I think you have a legal obligation to go and have consensus amongst the council before that would be turned over. But in the, for the everyday kind of bland public record, you know, if it's a record or two here and there, I personally don't see a problem with a counselor talking to staff about getting a copy of that. I mean, you have the right to know the business of the jurisdiction you're leading. But the larger that request would get, I think as a matter of good practice, it's probably best to run that by your fellow counselors to make sure everybody's comfortable with that. And then it becomes almost a matter of course that, you know, yeah, we'll get those to you, so. And then a little bit, very briefly, preservation and destruction. There is a retention schedule that's set out. Secretary of State has a ridiculously large manual on the various things in terms of the timeline that, it doesn't go to the doc, it's not emails must be maintained for X amount of years and written correspondence must be maintained. It has to do with the subject of whatever the record is, which makes it actually even that much more difficult, because you're going to go through and kind of figure out, does this fit into this topic or this topic? What is this? It's not an easy job, but there is the duty to maintain those records for a variety of different lengths of time. And it all depends on what the thing is. And some things have to be maintained indefinitely. So, it's important to have at least a working knowledge of what some of those are.
So, emails we're talking about right now? So, I've been deleting them or putting them in my deleted file. I haven't been mastered, I mean, it's like the League of Oregon Cities, I got something today from them for who knows what. And instead of just clogging up my inbox, I just plop it into the deleted file. Can I then delete that? Or does it still stay on the server somewhere or should I not even delete it?
So, a couple of points on that. That's a very good question. Number one, are all of you using city email, like with a city domain name and a city email address for city communications? Okay. That's the first thing I'd recommend if you're not. Hillary Clinton problem, right? I mean, it's, it's, we have, we have, you know, plenty of, I'll see on like, you know, I've never really looked that closely at, when I see a council email from all of you, but, you know, where they're using Gmail accounts and Hotmail accounts. It's okay, it's not unlawful, but the problem is, is that you've still got a duty to preserve anything that would be a public record. And it technically can, if there's ever a debate about that, expose your personal computer, you know, wherever your email is kept, to some sort of inspection, where someone's going through, not you and probably not me. You know, well, that, you know, hmm, that seems personal, maybe not, I don't know. You know, you don't want to put your... So, you know, use a, use a city email address for all city business. And then I'm going to have to defer to these guys on how that, how that, you know, your server, whether it's got redundant backups, whether things are maintained even if you delete them. I will say that if it's something like a League of Oregon Cities email, you only need one copy of whatever it is. It's not like since seven of you got a, got a email from the League of Oregon Cities that there have to be seven copies maintained, right? It would be one. So, you know, a lot of it's going to depend upon, you know, how the city backs up things and then what is the, what is the communication? If you're having a communication, you know, with, on some amount of substance, I think that's a much heightened sort of sense of, okay, I want to make sure I don't delete this. Or at least make sure that the city servers have a copy of it. And do you have a sense of how that works?
Yeah. Jolene works with Robert Hill, our IT person on this. It's my understanding right now that all of those emails that get to your inbox are going through the, through the email exchange. But Jolene, do we have those recorded?
Yes, we back everything up. Even if you delete it, we keep it. It can never be disappeared.
So, you're...
So, I know that the email provider, Rackspace, because it's the same one I use, does offer as a service, permanent archive, never deleted. Does the city purchase that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, all right. So, it never goes away?
For a tune of eight thousand four dollars a year.
Yeah.
It's a heck of a deal.
You got to do it. You have to have some easy way to make sure it gets done. You know, it's a lot, it'd be more expensive if you're, you get them audited and wow, here's this whole, oh, here's where the emails are going, you know? How do you...
So, when we get surveys from Governing Magazine and I just hit delete on it, then I'm okay?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it sounds like I can delete it all the way to the delete, right? So, I can go into my deleted file and just delete all those as well?
As long as that wouldn't affect the, it doesn't sound like it would, yeah. I think you'd be fine.
Three or four thousand of them now?
Well, there could be a shitload of them already, yeah.
That's only been...
Two and a half of them.
But imagine that process if you were using like a Gmail account, you know, and you were having to go through and siphon and segregate all the work stuff from work. City council business, city business from personal stuff from work, it's a nightmare.
From a technical standpoint, I work in IT. So, from a technical standpoint, you may have a server someplace where you have email and you may delete it, you may empty your delete it box and it's gone. I mean, Microsoft Exchange has like a thirty-day retention built into it, but others don't. It's, it's gone. The Rackspace service that we purchase email from has a permanent retention archive system built on top of that.
Right.
Which is in addition to that. It may not exist at Yahoo, may not exist at Google.
Gmail.
May not exist on a personal email system someplace, but has been purchased specifically from Rackspace to provide that service.
Right. Yeah, I don't think there's any reason, as long as you're all using, you know, city.gladstone.org.us as your domain for work, I'm sorry, I call it work. It is work in a way for you. Work for me, but, you know, as long as you're doing that for city business, you're fine. It's just those times, and I've seen it a number of times, where, you know, someone uses their Hotmail, you just got to be cognizant of, well, you know, is that, depending on who you're sending it to, is that getting back to the, to the city server?
But in those cases, delete and empty the deleted folder may really mean it's gone.
Oh, right. I would think it does. I mean, they, you know, I've always assumed that it is when I have my Gmail account and I delete stuff, it's gone.
Right. But for the city of Gladstone, if you delete it and empty the deleted file, it's not really gone.
Perfect, that's fine.
It's not really gone, right? It's all up my own.
Okay. Ethics, last topic. I know. Do my best.
Remember the rules, right?
Yeah. So, this is, you probably are going through, you probably got in your little form in the mail that you got to fill out by April fifteenth, so you have some idea of how this process works. I'll just point out some high points with respect to the ethics law. Conflicts of interest, okay? That's, that's one thing that probably for you as counselors comes up more than any other aspect of the ethics law. And conflict of interest is not whether you have an opinion on something. It's not whether, you know, someone can look at your dealings with the public and say, well, you know, you know, Joe Smith really well, and so of course you're going to... It has to do with whether you have a financial benefit or detriment that is related to a decision you make, okay? Two types, an actual conflict of interest and a potential. An actual exists if you, if a decision you make will have a financial effect on you, either positive or negative, okay? If that is the case, you absolutely cannot participate in that decision. You have to literally stand down, okay? Much more common are these things that are potential conflicts of interest, where you may have, it may have some financial impact on you. And if that's the case, then you have a legal duty to say what that is, to announce it, to put it on the record and say, I think, you know, I can't predict the future. This kind of comes up sometimes, again, sort of picking on land use, you know, if someone might have a professional relationship with maybe a firm that is presenting or some sort of weak but, but, you know, actual connection to, you know, let's say a developer or an applicant, then what I'll say to people is like, look, I don't, I think, you know, it would take a number of steps in a lumber of, you know, unknowns before you would, you would or will realize any sort of financial impact from, from this decision, but you might. And so, that's what your duty is to say, is that I might, you know? And as long as you say that and put that on the record, you can still continue to participate. You've checked the legal box that you've got to check. And someone can challenge you and say, I think you're wrong and here's why I think you do have a conflict of interest. But normally, that's a, you know, it's pretty clear when you do and you don't. If not, you know, then there's this whole gray area of like, I might. And as long as that, you're in that gray area and you put that on the record, you've satisfied your, your legal obligation. One of the gifts, issue about gifts, there's a whole laundry list of things that look and walk and talk like gifts that really aren't gifts. But by and large, the biggest thing probably for all of you at the city council level to be thinking about is anybody... to be thinking about is anybody, myself included, that might have some financial or, or legislative or administrative interest in what the city does, you know, I send you a bill every month, you pay that, that, that would certainly qualify. Anybody that, that fits that category is limited to giving you no more than fifty dollars in a calendar year, okay? In, in any form, right? So, if I go out, we were doing something socially, and I bought you lunch, you know, you'd, you and I would need to make sure that, you know, we're monitoring that. I mean, there would be a, a prohibition on anything above fifty dollars. And it's often why, you know, we frankly don't, we, in the past few years, like, we like to honor clients, what you do as professionals, right? You guys are good to us. Uh, but what we do these years, like, for instance, with sending like a, like a holiday thing, instead of doing like a fruit basket, or whatever it might be, as absurd as this sounds, uh, it's really for everybody's protection. We, we just give a donation, you know, on your, in your name to whatever the cause, usually for the heat project, for, for folks that can't afford, or having trouble paying their heating bill. So, you know, that's just something to keep in mind. Anybody that, you know, might have a potential interest in a decision you make, uh, cannot give you more than fifty dollars' worth of stuff over the course of a, of a calendar year.
So, you can take me to dinner as long as I stay under forty-nine dollars?
A cheap date.
Okay.
Yep. No going to Sailor's, I guess.
Sizzler. Yeah. You've got the reporting requirement, you're going to do that, um, soon, coming up. And one other thing, uh, that I'll say about, about ethics laws is the prohibition on nepotism. So, really, the only time I think you'd be confronting this is if you're talking about having, you know, somebody that may be related to you appointed to a position, certainly if there's any consideration, you know, for a, for a, an employment opportunity, you know? That's a very, very, uh, normally speaking, the easiest answer is that if, if that is the case, if it's a relative or somebody that you're, you just can't participate in that decision. Doesn't mean the council can't make the decision, but you, as the related individual, member of a household, is really how they describe it, um, are, are, should be staying far away from that decision.
Voluntarily only, or?
No, volunteers, volunteers too.
Okay.
Yep. If anybody that's in a position of any authority within the city, so like a board, um, you know?
Not to pick on Len, but his daughter does a fair amount for us. Much appreciated, so...
Yep. Len should be recusing himself when it comes to decisions about, we're going to put Tammy on this board, I mean, she does a great job. I mean, there's no reason that, there's nothing untoward about it, it's just a matter of, relative to Len, that's probably something that he should not, you know, when it comes to that, be, be voting on. Just for your protection.
What does my daughter do?
Nothing, I'm not picking on you, but he is saying, I just wanted clarification, that if your daughter, when your daughter runs for, um, Planning Commission again, if she chooses to run, what, what is your legal requirements? And it sounds like you're not supposed to vote, is what he's saying, or you shouldn't.
Yeah.
I just wanted, no, no, I'm not...
Whatever, I probably won't even be on the council by then.
I was going to pick on, on Neil, but Justin hasn't run for anything yet.
Well, I was just going to say, when Justin's up for chief of the fire department, I'll, I'll step down.
You'd have to, right? Yeah. Okay, finally.
Granny's only, you know, twenty-three, so I think we've got a couple of years to...
Um, very briefly about budget law.
Farther than that.
You've got this unique, not, not every state requires local governments to go through this, I mean, I think they all do a budget, but it's not so tightly controlled from top down. Another one of, a lot like land use in that way. And generally speaking, um, you know, the budget has to contain certain standards, there is some, some, relative to, you know, private industry, your budgeting is done on a fund by fund basis, that can, I know, create headaches with respect to people that aren't trained in, uh, fund accounting. But that's something that I think, you know, most communities are aware of and try to find people that can, that have that. But is there anything unique about that, Pete, that you think is, or in the process is problematic?
In the, in the process, no. It's just the general understanding that, uh, for instance, water rates pay for water infrastructure. It's in a separate fund called an enterprise fund. Uh, it's meant to be self-sustaining, um, and there are limits to how you can transfer money between the funds. You need to have a good justification for doing that. Sometimes we do that with administrative fees. Uh, for instance, we charge the water fund for an administrative fee, and it's based on, uh, work that's done by the general fund for that fund, such as payroll liability insurance is paid for out of the general fund, uh, things like that. So, you just need to be careful how you limit those funds. If you remember, a while back, we had an inter-fund loan, uh, between the water department and the sewer and state revenue sharing. So, there, there are things that can be done, but you really should stay away from transferring those funds as much as possible in, in between.
And then the only other thing I'd say about the budget law is just obviously, uh, the requirement that you have a budget committee, and it's made up of residents of your city, and council, of course. Uh, that part is mandatory, and I think it's actually a pretty good thing, and probably one of those things that most communities would do even if they weren't obligated by law to do it.
Well, I think that one thing that came up that Neil, at Council Reisner, attended a training, uh, right now, we currently have an alternate on the budget committee, and I, I think at that training, they explicitly said that, uh, you can't have alternates for the budget committee.
Right. I was going to ask about if you'd followed up on that. They, yeah, mentioned that in the budget process, you know, you have to have, in our case, seven, uh, community members, and, uh, but still you have to have a quorum, so if, if a couple of them are, are not there, uh, that's still, you know, it's still okay because you still have, would have a quorum, like, say, twelve out of the, uh, the fourteen. And, and then, and so I said, well, what about alternates? And he's like, what do you mean, alternates? And I said, and explained, and, and I was, I challenged him. I was pretty adamant, well, we, we have, and back when I was on the school board, twenty years ago, we had alternates also. And he goes, uh, budget law doesn't allow for alternates.
And I, I've done some calling around other jurisdictions, and, uh, some of them have alternates, uh, the majority of them don't. Some were aware of that law, some weren't.
Is there an actual statute that prohibits it? I mean, I guess, I should know that, I just don't, I don't, I'm not...
The impression I got from what I remember him saying is that, um, law doesn't allow it.
Which is different than the law prohibiting it.
Right. I, I think was the wording that he used. So, I was just wanting, like I say, I talked to Pete about a couple of weeks ago, because I want to make sure that we're not afoul, uh, when we go through the process, so.
I can take a, you want me to take a quick look at it?
Sure. I, I, yeah, it, it, just make sure we're not, you know, we're not, uh...
I will.
Being, you know, someone challenging, uh, the budget process, you know?
Yeah, that would be a bummer if your entire budget got undone because of using an alternate. So, yeah, no, I will, I will definitely look at that.
Thank you.
That's it, unless people have questions. It's my dog and pony show.
So, I, I was curious, in the, um, um, insurance thing, they were talking about a, uh, Training 101, does this qualify for that? For one of the things that they check off on? Do you know, Jolene?
I will call and find out. They have a specific one-on-one course for you guys to take, but I can find out if this would be sufficient.
Oh, okay. So, I, I just, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Did we want to do? We good? Any questions, or?
Thank you. Appreciate your, your time.
Thank you.
I learn something new every time.
Yeah.
Good.
Ditto.
All right. Well, we are now business from the council.
Only thing I have to say is that, uh, last Friday, I went on the Meals on Wheels, didn't sound right. And it was a fellow named Earl, he did it for six years, he does the Friday run, and I met, uh, twenty, thirty really neat people. Most of them were locked into their house or their trailer because they were handicapped and couldn't leave, and they were, you know, I got to go in and meet them and, uh, spend a few minutes with them, and what a great program. Yeah, they were so happy to see him come on Friday, and, you know, he knows them by name, and their animals are there, and, yeah, it was really a neat time. I really enjoyed it. Yeah, it's a part of Gladstone you don't ever get to see.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you get a chance to ride along with somebody, just take it if you got an hour and a half, two hours at the most.
As in for me, sir.
What is the, uh, status of our sewer master plans, Mr. Boyce? Where are we at with that?
I've just finished revising the language, so we should have it advertised by the end of this week.
Okay. And what is the status of our next City Hall Police Station Advisory Committee meeting?
Well, we had, uh, we had one last night.
Oh, there was?
Yep, that was the second one. We're, uh, we're, as I said at the first meeting, they're going to be, be meeting every two weeks at six-thirty PM, so two weeks from yesterday, we'll, we'll be having another one. We're also going to start putting the agendas and meeting packets and any information they generate on the city website. Speaking with Todd Angelo, who is elected chair of the committee today, um, we, we also talked about, uh, including notice in the newsletters of the meetings, and, uh, certain outreach, outreach to different groups, so we're...
I would like to be included in those meeting notices if I could.
Yeah. I'll, I'll include all of the city councils so everyone's aware, and we'll, we'll just email you a packet.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Nothing.
Well, I went on the Meals on Wheels today on Tuesday with the mayor, but I do it every Tuesday. I have route one, so I don't get to go to the mobile home court, so I have the different route. Um, yeah, so we had a good time today, and I do it every Tuesday, so if anybody else wants to come on on Tuesday, get ahold of me.
Make note of that, because I like it, so. Uh, three different things. Traffic safety, we met a couple of weeks ago, um, or I think three weeks ago, and we've got a member, um, that is interested in Speed Radar Van, so he's going to put together some information to take back to them. I just wanted to let you know that, uh, there's thought of that. Uh, he works with the program over in Beaverton. Uh, as I mentioned, I, uh, attended, uh, the Department of Revenue's local budget, budget training here earlier this month, and also one with LOC. But what's really cool was Malachi, and I have no idea how to pronounce his last name.
Delfold, yeah.
Delfold.
Delfold.
Yes, exactly. Uh, he was on our budget and planning, uh, committee, he also attended, which, uh, I thought was really neat. And then I met yesterday with Brent Barton, our state rep, who is wanting to, uh, come before us maybe next month or, or in May. No?
Oh, I could. That's a question. So, I'm busy with...
...visiting visitor.
Put him under, uh, business from the audience, he gets three minutes?
Um, no.
Sorry. Stay here. So, it was mostly on, uh, educational stuff. I was there, uh, trying to get more money for, uh, our, our kids. Thank you.
Cool. I don't have anything. Uh, I'd like to thank the lone survivors.